Not having enough chairs to all the chairs.
I know. None on the agenda is that.
We have a lot of planning to do.
Yes, we do.
On the plus side, I bet this will clear up pretty quickly. I'll save harbor, I think a lot of it is.
Okay, I'm going to call this regular city commission, Traverse City City Commission meeting of Monday, May 5th, the order, all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
We begin as always by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipoora peoples who have stewarded this land through the generations. We thank them for their strength and resilience in protecting this land, inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And with that, I will hand it over now to Mr. Mayor Tutte for our roll call.
Yes, and good evening, Commissioner Warner, here. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor Shamro.
Here. We move on to announcements from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. The city has launched the final community survey for the strategic action plan. In addition to the survey, we invite the public to attend the community summit to review the draft plan on Monday, May 19th, from 4:30 to 6:00 at the senior center. More information and links to the survey may be found on the city's website under projects. We would like to thank that everyone that was able to attend the senior center grand opening and celebrate the community milestone with us last week. We had an incredible turnout and there were so many smiling faces. Thank you to all that were involved in making this project a success. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great turnout. City clerk, announcements please.
Yes, some meetings to announce for this week, the week of May 5th, 2025. The planning commission will meet at, on Tuesday, May 6th, at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers. The recreational authority for the city in Garfield Township will meet on Wednesday, May 7th, that's at 7:00 PM in the commission chambers. We are recruiting for different boards and committees. Those include downtown development authority, local officers, compensation commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, and Coast Guard Committee. And anyone interested in serving is encouraged to contact the city clerk's office. And we now have packets for individuals who are interested in writing for mayor or city commissioners are available for pickup in the city clerk's office. And anyone with any questions on that can reach out to our office. And then just lastly, I want to ask a remind everyone sitting up here to remember to speak into the microphone so folks can hear you easily. That's all I've got.
Thank you for that. And we do have a proclamation, I believe Margie Rich is in the crowd, and if you want to join me, other, you're great, fine. See, I don't know how these work sometimes. So, City of Traverse City proclamation, May 2025, as teen pregnancy prevention month. Whereas teen pregnancy remains a critical issue affecting individuals, families, and communities across the nation. And whereas teen pregnancy prevention month provides an opportunity to raise awareness about the challenges faced by teens who become pregnant and to highlight the importance of education, support, and prevention programs. And whereas it is essential to provide comprehensive education on reproductive health, relationships, and responsible decision-making to help prevent unintended pregnancies. And whereas efforts to reduce teen pregnancy should include access to resources such as healthcare, counseling, and support services, which empower young people to make informed choices. And whereas through increased awareness and community-based programs, we can work to create an environment where teens are empowered to succeed academically, personally, and professionally without barriers that early parenthood can impose. And whereas teen pregnancy prevention month encourages individuals, organizations, schools, healthcare providers, and policymakers to collaborate in fostering positive, supportive, and educational environments for all young people. Excuse me, sorry. Now therefore, I, Amy Shamro, mayor of City of Traverse City, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as teen pregnancy prevention month. I call upon all citizens, community leaders, educators, healthcare professionals, and organizations to join in recognizing the significance of this month by supporting the efforts to prevent teen pregnancy and promote positive outcomes for young people. Margie, I know you've done a ton of work, both through where you're currently at and in the community over the last 20 years or so, just read your theme bio. And so I'll let you speak a little bit more to take this on.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you so much. And Amy, I'm gonna give you just some information that you can hand out if you'd like, okay? Thank you for doing this. I think it's really important that as a community, we take the opportunity to recognize some of our more vulnerable citizens. I know tonight, we have a very full crowd to consider some other citizens, some which actually are teen parents themselves. So it sort of goes hand in hand with some of the work you're going to be doing tonight. I'd also like to just quickly introduce Robyn Lagerquist, she also works with Generations Ahead. We are a very small nonprofit in our community, some of you may know us, and we work with teen parents of the greater Grand Traverse area. I'd like to just share a little bit about some of the issues facing teen parents and why we feel it's important to elevate some of their concerns among the general population. Over the past five years, in Grand Traverse County alone, there were 105 births to teen parents. These are young women, but it's not just the women we're concerned about, we also work with the young fathers and the babies that they, that are part of, make up the family. So this is well over 300 individuals that are impacted over the past five years. Teen parents face unique and very complicated challenges as they navigate their journey of parenthood. They are at an increased risk for many different detrimental outcomes. Teen moms have a much lower likelihood of graduating high school, as do teen fathers. Teen parents also are much more likely to live in poverty, they have poor health outcomes for themselves and their babies. Many teen parents face mental health issues, including depression and severe anxiety. Their babies also face significant issues that should be concerning to everybody in our community, including starting school often at a significant deficit. At Generations Ahead, we believe that empowering young parents helps them overcome many of these obstacles. With guidance and our community's support, these young parents will become more resilient and able to lead thriving and independent lives. Thank you for recognizing this, thank you for your proclamation tonight. This is a national month, it's not just locally. And as an organization that supports teen parents, we embrace working collectively with our full community to prevent further unintended pregnancies and to support young families so that they can become more resilient, building positive relationships, strengthening family stability, and raising healthy children. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Margie.
Yes, thank you very much.
Take one and pass it down. And if Commissioner Warner wouldn't mind just leaving some on the end there, we'll let anybody from the public who would want to pick up some of the information that was left to do it when, we either have a break because we go so long, or we hopefully adjourn. So with that, thank you for that, Margie, and for being here. And with that, we will now continue on with the agenda to the consent calendar, and I'll hand that back over to Benjamin.
Yes, the purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public can ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed from it and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests are automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Item one, consideration of approving the minutes of the April 21st, 2025 meeting of the city commission, approval recommended. Item two, consideration of authorizing an out-of-scope agreement for the upgrade to two sewer lift stations, approval recommended. Item three, consideration of authorizing a contract for the replacement of the entrance gangway and repair of adjacent docking systems for Dock F at the Duncan L. Clinch Marina, approval recommended. Item four, consideration of adopting to make permanent traffic control order 721, which provides for no parking west of Division Street to the former Hamples Key and Gun Shop driveway, approval recommended. Item five, consideration of adopting to make permanent traffic control order 732, which provides for a handicap parking space on the west side of Pine Street, south of Front Street, at the first parking space south of the mid-block pedestrian crossing, approval recommended. And finally, item six, consideration of approving amendments to the rules of operation and procedure for the Traverse City Human Rights Commission to adopt gender-neutral language, replacing male and female pronouns with they, them, and themselves, as well as other grammatical corrections for consistency and clarity purposes with the amendments recommended by the Human Rights Commission, approval recommended.
Okay, would any commissioner like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Seeing none, would anybody from the public like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Well, my oh my, does anybody want to make a motion then?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One second.
Thank you, Commissioner Treadwell and Commissioner Shaw. Okay, then with that, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we'll move on to item number one in old business, which is our public hearing on the Safe Harbor SLEP, and I will hand that off to you to start, Liz. I expected a few consent calendar items. Sorry. Everybody did a great job of asking questions ahead of time and clarifying, thank you for that.
Thank you. While we are here this evening, pardon me, and again, attached is previously submitted memo from Sean Winter, our planning director, indicating that the planning commission does request approval for the special land use permit for Safe Harbor. And I know we do have some individuals from Safe Harbor here to answer any questions. I wasn't sure if any commissioners had any questions about this process, for me.
I don't think so. This is just starting the Safe Harbor, or the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Sorry, I had a moment where I thought I was starting a public hearing and I got really confused myself. So this is just a motion to establish the public.
Well, no, this is, this is the public hearing.
Sorry, that's where I was getting myself confused, apologies. Okay, so do I, when do I bang my gavel, basically?
Whenever you're, if you're ready to open up the public hearing now.
Which I don't, again, have a gavel, so again, we're going to use a water bottle for anybody who watches frequently or attends frequently. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. So this is an opportunity just to clarify for everybody to speak, then we'll open it, we'll close it out, and then we'll have discussion with the commission, and there's a motion. So it's going to be a chance for you to put your comments on the record, but there will also be further discussion afterwards. So it's just kind of a process that we do here, and I just wanted to make that clear for everybody as we begin. So with that, I will open the public hearing.
Great, and we will begin with a presentation by the applicant, if the applicant would like to make a presentation. And if so, please come to the podium now. And then, once that is done, we will open it up for public comment for those residing within 300 feet of the Safe Harbor property, and then after that, everyone else. And so with that, the applicant can begin their presentation, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Pat Livingston, I've been volunteering at Safe Harbor since 2012, and currently serve as chair of the Safe Harbor Board. Since being asked to operate year-round with the blessing of 21 area churches and more than 2,000 volunteers, the Safe Harbor Board and staff put together a plan. Thanks to support from the city, county, and community, we've been able to retain the majority of our staff. Volunteers, both from churches and the community, have already started fill positions needed throughout the summer. Since our current SLEP allows us to be open through May 15th, instead of closing on April 30th, we transitioned to summer operations on May 1st, with the anticipation of you approving a new SLEP tonight. In the first few days, we have already averaged 70 guests a night, with some coming from the pines. While giving guests a safe and sanitary place to sleep, we also offer showers, laundry services, hygiene items, and guidance to get our guests connected with much-needed services. As the task force, which Safe Harbor is a part of, looks for long-term solutions to serving those experiencing homelessness, we are hopeful that being able to interact with our guests on a year-round basis will lead to better outcomes, including permitted housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great.
And thank you for that. And now we'll open the floor for public comment for individuals who reside within 300 feet of 517 Wellington Street, which is the site of Safe Harbor. For those who do reside within that distance area, we'd ask if you're able that you line up at the podium, so we minimize the amount of time in between speakers, and we'll ask for that throughout the entire evening to move things along. And if you do wish to speak, we ask that you state your name and address, indicate if you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment, when your time has elapsed, the timer will beep. And we ask that our language be respectful to everyone. And finally, we want an environment tonight where everyone feels comfortable speaking. And so in that spirit, we ask that there be absolutely no reactions from the audience whatsoever. And so with that, I invite anyone who resides within 300 feet of 517 Wellington Street to please come to the podium if you'd like to speak. And again, we ask folks to line up if you're able to, thank you. Please begin.
My name is Cody Klein, I live at 510 Wellington Street. Might be 520.
Absolutely, great.
I live in the new Ruth Park Apartments, right, we share a parking lot with Safe Harbor. And last week was the first time in my life, living in Traverse City, that I did not feel safe. I took my two kids for a walk, I have a 13-year-old and a seven-year-old, and we walk past Safe Harbor to go to the Boardman Lake Trail. When we crossed the threshold of the gate area into that park there, as we approached, a gentleman, there was a group of people coming from presumably the pines towards that area, and they waited until they were standing about this far from my oldest son's, from my oldest son, and just screamed at the top of their lungs. And he is autistic, he was very shaken, he was like, "Why would they do that? Why me?" So many questions, and then his little brother is his protector, and so he was very upset. But the gentleman did not just let it go, he started barking at us and following us. And I couldn't even have a gun for protection if I wanted to, because they're not allowed on the premises there. And so it's very scary to feel like I can't take a walk or take my kids where we've always gone, because we're going to be followed by someone and scream that, bark that, you name it. It just kind of sucks, and constantly we find needles, use Narcan, just everywhere, meth pipes. It's just really changed that whole little area right there, and it's gotten really scary.
Thank you for sharing.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Corbett, and I'm a resident of the Boardman Neighborhood, my address is 428 Washington Street, near Safe Harbor's location at 517 Wellington. I'm here as a parent and a neighbor who believes in compassionate, effective support for people experiencing homelessness. I'm here tonight to ask the mayor, the pro tem, Mayor Pro Tem, and the city commissioners to pair compassion with responsibility, especially when it impacts the safety and well-being of all residents, including children. At this current location in our neighborhood, we've repeatedly witnessed open drug use, public intoxication, trespassing, lagering, and confrontational behavior while our children walk, bike, and play. These are not isolated incidents, they reflect persistent, unaddressed safety concerns in a residential neighborhood. You asked our chief of police to develop a safety plan for Safe Harbor to go year-round, and we delivered one, which included specific ordinance recommendations. However, the city has failed to act on it and support these ordinances that were recommended. Why would you consider year-round operations before implementing the very measures our law enforcement professionals say are needed? As a mother, taxpayer, and community member, I find that unacceptable. We were literally told this location was a seasonal solution, years later it remains, and now a permanent expansion is being proposed, without the basic protections that were promised or the leadership needed to make this work safely. This is not just about one vulnerable population, our children, our elderly, and our families are vulnerable too. Safety and compassion are not opposing values, they must go hand in hand. This is a city and county-wide issue that demands a coordinated, long-term strategy, a non-residential, centralized location with integrated services, strong oversight, and equitable zoning. Concentrating the burden in one neighborhood is not only unfair, it's unsustainable. I urge the city and Safe Harbor to continue working with the Community Cares Coalition. Everyone deserves to feel safe, everyone who lives and visits here as well. Please delay permanent approval until the safety plan is fully implemented and a transparent, community-informed solution is in place, one that reflects the needs and dignity of all residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to address the commission that resides within 300 feet, please come forward. Okay, so you know, and anyone else who would like to address the commission on this topic regardless of where you reside, please come to the podium. And again, we ask folks, if you're able to, to please line up. Can we see a show of hands of the number of folks who intend to speak? Great, all right, super. So yes, a line is really important if you're willing, thank you.
I'm Dave Meggibill, I'm the president and CEO of the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation, we're located at 800 Cottage View, Suite 1040. The community foundation, along with our partner Rotary Charities, convened the Homeless Collective last year. Unfortunately, Miss Sicker couldn't be here tonight. Thank you to the city commission for your support in helping to address the often difficult and complex issues around homelessness. I don't need to tell the commission that there are no easy solutions or quick fixes. And it's an issue that affects virtually everyone in the community, and one in which communities across the country continue to grapple. We would not be here tonight without the city's support, including the resolution inviting Safe Harbor to submit a SLEP to operate year-round, approval of funding for East Bay flats while they await their LI-Tec funding, and the appropriation for Safe Harbor to support year-round operations. I want to give special shout-outs to the city manager, the chief of police, and the prosecutor for working with the Homelessness Collective in such a constructive and consistent fashion. The commitment of the community foundation and Rotary Charities have made over the last year in bringing neighborhood associations, service providers, law enforcement, local government, and nonprofits, in what became known as the Homelessness Collective, is founded on our organization's shared commitment to equity. Our work on the Homelessness Collective, like our other equity work, recognizes that all people are not similarly situated, that a segment of our community does not have access to the same resources others enjoy, and that by centering our equity work on helping the most vulnerable, it benefits not only them, but the community as a whole. The Homelessness Collective also underscores the importance of collaboration between the nonprofit, government, and business sectors, of using a fact-based approach in the work, and building trust is a necessary precondition to finding solutions. With the city commission's approval of the SLEP this evening, we have made an important step forward as a community. The task force, which the Coalition to End Homelessness is convening, is the next step in a community-wide approach to housing and homelessness. It will take time, significant investment of resources, and resolution of opting conflicting perspectives to find a way forward. For now, however, I'm proud of the progress we've made, thanks to the many people and organizations who concluded that Traverse City has the leadership, the resources, and the will to resolve our housing and homelessness crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Halliday Schmann, I'm the director of the Northwest Michigan Coalition to End Homelessness. And I'm here like Dave to express my strong and ongoing support for the approval of the SLEP that will allow for year-round operation of Safe Harbor. This is not just a land use decision tonight, it is a critical next step forward in meeting the basic human rights of some of our, of our most vulnerable neighbors. Over the past year, the coalition has worked closely within the Homeless Collective that involved, like Dave said, city, city staff, county staff, service providers, and funders to ensure we have a plan in place that increases shelter capacity, connects people to housing, which is most important, and improves outcomes for people experiencing homelessness. The city's decision to allocate funding towards shelter was a significant commitment to the shared vision. Now, the land use permit is the piece that will allow this plan to, to take, sorry, I lost my place, this plan to move from paper to reality. The Housing and Homelessness Task Force has started just last week, and has started to collaborate around a sustainable plan for year-round shelter. Likely you will hear that tonight, and we're working on it. The task force, like I said, convened last week, we have some advisory members coming this week to report on some already great first steps. We recognize the closure of the encampment following this decision is a difficult and emotional issue, not just for the people in this room, but for the people experiencing the problem. However, people deserve to be inside and have the choice to stay inside. This year-round shelter will provide a safer, more stable, and more service-rich environment than can ever be achieved outdoors. Approving this SLEP doesn't solve homelessness overnight, but it honors the planning, the partnership, the resource allocation, and the compassion that have brought us to this point. I urge you to support the permit and continue working alongside the coalition and our partners as we move toward a community where everyone has a safe place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nancy Brick, and I live at 830 Birchwood Avenue, Traverse City. We have businesses, buildings, property in this neighborhood. I grew up on Sixth Street and am a fourth-generation citizen of Traverse City. My children and grandchildren are Libra, and thus our fifth and sixth generation. I lived here when the state hospital closed, and all the residents were just let loose when the hospital closed its doors. It was a problem. Yet solutions were fostered out of this tumultuous time. Brickways, an independent living center, was specifically designed to house, nourish, teach, socialize, and live collaboratively in independent housing, all designed for the needs of this unhoused population. I have nine grandchildren who reside in this neighborhood, Boardman Neighborhood. I am appalled, and you would be too, if you lived there, at what they have had to witness: hypodermic needles under their bushes, drunken desertedly behavior, grown adults sprayed out in their yard with unnamable stuff coming from them, knife wielders located in their backyards, police knocking on their front doors in search of persons currently in Safe Harbor. This is unacceptable. There are people sitting here that do not want this in their neighborhood, while now they do the North Boardman folks with homes and businesses. Throwing this neighborhood out the window for the homeless is a disrespectful slap at these taxpaying residents. You have set the table to tell these resident homeowners, suck it up, you don't count. Instead of offering or being open-minded to other solutions, you have railroaded this down the throats of these residents as your only option. There are several million dollars coming into the city via tax revenue from this Boardman Neighborhood. Where are their rights? Who's taking care of them? Could we not find a better solution? A place with services, with caring professionals, and concerted fundraising just outside of this neighborhood, any neighborhood around here? To build up the unhoused in a place that doesn't impact one of Traverse City's oldest, most established neighborhoods, I am opposed to a year-round Safe Harbor in this current location, I am even opposed to a part-time Safe Harbor in this location, and I'm opposed to the tents in the pines. And I'm opposed to the tents in the pines. Let's find a place for these unhoused people who need counseling, who need health care, and et cetera. Let's find a place which won't impact law-abiding families who are bearing the burden. Everyone deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Audrey. I'm currently houseless. I'm experiencing homelessness. I live in my van. But when I first came here, I lived in my hammock on the beach, and I camped in the pines because I had nowhere to go. Safe Harbor, I'm not a drug addict, by the way. Most of my community are not drug addicts. I know a lot of drug addicts, and some of them are homeless, and some of them have houses, really nice houses. I can tell you, right on Center Avenue in Bay City, several houses filled with drug addicts who are living in homes. Is the drug problem a problem? Hell, yeah, it's a problem. But even somebody with a drug problem, they're human, and they deserve dignity. We deserve a home. I deserve a home. Everyone deserves a home. Living on the streets is not a fun experience. It's not a vacation. It's not, it's not a fad. It's not a thing. I came here with a dream. I wanted to be a tall ship sailor. In my struggle to find housing, I have lost that dream. I have lost that sight. But I am here because I need to fight for my community. And Safe Harbor provided me with a little bit of dignity in a world that didn't show me dignity. When I was walking down the street with my big-ass backpack and my hammock hanging out, people laughing at me and calling me names, and I still had that dream in my head, I'm going to be a freaking tall ship sailor. Somebody's going to see me. Somebody's going to see my value. But now I'm here because I have a voice, and I have, I have to be here to speak for my community because they are vulnerable. Everybody deserves housing, even if they have a drinking problem, even if they're drunk. Everybody deserves dignity, and everybody deserves a home. And this is why I'm here, because I have been told on several occasions that this is, oh, people have places to go, they just want to hang out in the pines. Well, that's not true. And it wasn't true for me, because when I was living at Goodwill Inn, and they told me my time was up, they freaking handed me a tent and said, "Go to the pines," because that's the only option we have. And then Safe Harbor opened up, and it gave me a place to stay in the winter, but it didn't give me a place to stay in the summertime. So I was back in the woods. So that is why I'm here, because I need to speak for my community. Thank you.
Thank you. No, please refrain just so everybody feels comfortable, but thank you for your comments. Continue.
Hi. I'm very nervous, so, and I made a last-minute decision today to come and speak up. I have had the privilege of working with the homeless in the past, and I monitor all the different things that people are doing, like hamsters on separate wheels for the people in the pines. We have a great giving community. But I came to speak today because of something I haven't shared a lot, but I was kidnapped when I was five years old. And my grandchildren's bus stop is right there at the shelter that's currently there. I was looking forward to summer and not having to worry about them getting on and off the bus. I've been approached on and off, getting them on and off the bus. I, again, the needles, everything that everyone says, "We can't put the cart before the horse." We let everyone go to that shelter, everyone, no matter what crime they've committed, no matter if they haven't committed a crime. It is of the utmost importance to protect the children. That bus stop is right there. They are routinely approached every single day that they get on and off that bus. Small children, there are trails to cart them off to. Again, there are many levels of people that stay there, and I have great compassion for them. But we're one incident away from something catastrophic happening to one of our little We've got to find an alternative. It's just not fair. It's too close, and they're not protected. There is not protection there. There are not safety guards. There's not a police presence. There's not anything. They flood out of the gates in the morning there. They hang out there against Gent's walls and congregate and go through their bags or go find their stuff that they've left outside to put in their bags. Something has to be done better for our people. Thank you.
Only if you're willing, would you provide your name and address?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm so nervous.
That's okay. I understand.
Tammy Donnelly, and it's 2783 Lake Anne Road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Must have lived in a different place or something. I was downtown, I think it was yesterday, it wasn't too bad, walked around that area. But anyways, I might, you know, think, before we start patting ourselves on the back about the slump approval, that, you know, we're still talking about removing people from pines, which, I know, as far as I know, as far as, you know, Safe Harbor guy said, Patrick, I believe, was, I think there's like 70 people there a night, and I think there's only like 72 beds, something like that. And I think there's more than two people in the pines. So I'm not sure if you guys have a plan for what to do with people that don't have a spot, you know? Or maybe, you know, some people don't seem to want them at Safe Harbor either. I don't, I don't know. Maybe, you know, like this Chief Dickman over here would just put them in jail? I mean, is that a solution? Or, I'm not sure what you guys are really trying to do, except, I don't know, win some, like, brownie points with public here? I don't know. You guys are a disappointment.
Excuse me. If you're willing, would you provide your name? Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
My name is BJ Brick. I live outside of that 100-yard or 300-feet circumference from earlier, but I'm pretty dang close, and have, you know, kind of watched the progress there and have been following the, I guess, the conversation around this pretty closely. Have a long legacy of supporting as many people as possible in this community that have, that are adults with developmental disabilities. And I know how much this item is conflicting even in my own heart, so I just wanted to say, I just appreciate everybody's words here tonight. The reason, though, I'm speaking is, as a current resident, I do deeply care about the city, its future, and the quality of life for all of us, including the unhoused. But I'm, I'm here to discuss the decision to make it year-round in larger conversation about how we address homelessness in Traverse City with ethically, effectively, and also sustainably. My belief is that people should have housing. I just think that there's locations to be discussed that isn't this one. It is just too close, and there's some data I would like to share. But it is a vibrant home for families, tourism, and businesses all in this one location. It's where we raise our children and build our community. But recently, parents, including myself, and some have expressed concern today, and I'm not joking, I don't know how many of you guys live near there, but it isn't, it is not a walk in the park, and we are constantly dealing with issues. It's a reality we can't ignore. People experiencing homelessness deserve dignity, but we must find a solution that works for all. According to the data from the National Alliance on Homelessness, that service campuses outside of downtown areas have a 60% higher success rate in connecting individuals to housing, employment, and recovery. And according to the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, shelters in high tourism areas create conflicts with safety and local economies. That is, that is a recommendation from both of those not to have them in neighborhoods. Shelters in high tourism, I'm sorry, in 2023, a report from Traverse City Connect showed that downtown Traverse City businesses contribute over 30% of the local GDP. I'm a business owner. I know plenty of people that are not loving the direction of what Traverse City is becoming and what their futures will be as far as businesses concerned. And in that neighborhood alone of nearly 500 households, it has to come close to nearly 5 to 7 million in tax revenue. I'm sorry, 3.5 to 5 million. On the high end, it could go higher, but I don't have the exact math. But it is quite a bit in retention and customer confidence and investor confidence.
Excuse me. Thank you. Your time has elapsed. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is TJ Andrews. I'm the county commissioner. I represent the district where Safe Harbor is located, and I live in the neighborhood where Safe Harbor is located. And I'm here today to speak in support of the SLUP application that's in front of you. As this board is aware, the Grand Travers County Commission voted in what I would consider a historic vote in February to provide $400,000 to support Safe Harbor moving to a year-round shelter. That's $200,000 a year for the next two years. And as the decision in front of you tonight is neither permanent nor sustainable by design, the $200,000 is also not sustainable by design. It is intended to come with strings attached, and the county provided some very clear and distinct strings attached to that contribution. And I'm just going to read a couple of them because I think they are informative to the next steps that has to happen in parallel with why, with the same time that Safe Harbor is operating on a year-round basis. The task force needs to convene. We need the data that Safe Harbor is going to gather, and they commit it to gather as a condition of county funding and to provide publicly. Working with its partners, Safe Harbor will provide the board, the Grand Travers County Board, with general metrics each month, such as the number of guests per night at the shelter, the number of guests connected with services, the gender, veteran status, the number of guests diverted from the shelter, and when available, the last county of origin. Safe Harbor will continue working with community partners as is practical uncoordinated entry and diversion that is already working very well at Safe Harbor and leading to improvements. The Homelessness Task Force will convene within 90 days with representation from Grand Travers County and Safe Harbor. That has already convened, and it should also include representatives from the Boardman Neighborhood Association, as well as the North Boardman Business District, which I assume is on your radar as well. And the Homelessness Task Force is to provide written monthly reports that are included in the consent calendar of every regular board meeting of the Grand Travers County Commission. That ensures public transparency and awareness as to what the process is that is happening in tandem with the process, with staying open for two years while the conversation continues. Where should the best shelter be located? What should it look like? Is this it? Those are open questions. Our county does not pretend to know the answers, but we have a task force that's committing to work on them. And I think this, you will reach the same conclusion we did, which is, we have to do something. We have to move this forward. We have to address this community issue as a community in parallel, both with a permanent year, with a full-year shelter, as well as a organized community conversation around a long-term, sustainable solution. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your work tonight. I look forward to hearing your vote. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Hanon. I run the outreach program at 222 Cass Street, downtown Traverse City. I'm thankful for you all considering this proposal to allow Safe Harbor to operate all year long. Homelessness is a very important, scary, and delicate issue. And you guys continue to show up to listen, look at the data, and support the operations of what it takes to be able to help people stay alive, meaning shelter, and then access to that permanent supportive housing or permanent housing that's not supportive, depending on what people need. So I'm very grateful for you looking at this and remembering that tonight is about the shelter that's not in the wintertime of the people that have nowhere to go. Not about clearing the pines, not about making people do one thing or do another, but it's a spot that is available for people who have nowhere to go to be able to be safe, even a bit for just one night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Starkel, 1436 Outer Drive here in Traverse City. So I'm the founding chairman of Safe Harbor of Grand Travers. I'm a little choked up. I was here 11 years ago to ask for our first SLUP, and I recognize some faces on the board who were with us at that time, and I just want to pledge my support to this and come with an explanation. We had an awful lot of pressure back then, and there's certainly pressure now to address this issue. And Safe Harbor, being a volunteer organization, has dedicated hundreds of thousands of hours to our, all of the people who come to make sure that those commitments and those promises are kept. We had a list of demands. We had a list of requirements from the city at that time. It sounds like this SLUP will come along with some of those as well. And through those years, we learned, we did an awful lot of listening, and I think that is continuing to happen, and problems arise, strategies get formed, solutions get created. That's the process here. I said this 100 times, nobody wants a homeless shelter, ever. We need one. And I'm very much in support of taking the efforts that we created when we built the shelter from a former warehouse to what it is today. And I believe that the people who are running the shelter today will be right there, making sure the promise that we've kept for the last 10 years continues to be made. So I thank you very much. This is not an easy topic, but I do appreciate everything that has happened. Finally, look at the support within the homeless community that exists, that didn't exist just 10 years ago. This community has moved forward, and it continues to build its skill sets and continues to deal with adverse conditions. Housing is harder now than it ever has been, and these are the individuals who are caught without anywhere to go. We're working towards it. I think we're doing a phenomenal job versus many other communities in this country, and it's all due to you guys and to the volunteers and to the steering committees, and our community is what's making this happen. And we'll make this successful, just like we did when we were here 11 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Farmer, a resident of the city at 413 Washington Street. As discussions continue regarding year-round operations for Safe Harbor, I'm concerned by the narrow focus on the current facility despite its well-documented limitations and the lack of serious consideration given to the Community Cares Coalition-proposed alternative. The current Safe Harbor site is not a sustainable, long-term solution. Capacity is already limited, and the region's homeless population underscores the urgent need for a more comprehensive plan. The CCC proposal addresses these gaps and offers a forward-looking approach with integrated services and fewer barriers to access, yet it continues to be sidelined. Change often meets with resistance, especially from long-established structures. However, decisions must be made based on facts and the shared goal of community well-being. We cannot ignore the reality of what residents in the Boardman neighborhood are experiencing, drunken, disorderly conduct, harassment, and open drug use. These are not isolated incidents. They are ongoing and deeply concerning. Safe outdoor access for families and children is being compromised. A summer marked by further disruptions is unacceptable. We also urge the City Commission to do its job and to treat the development of a safety plan as a core responsibility, not an afterthought. Public safety must be addressed with urgency, coordination, and accountability. For the well-being of the entire community, especially children, please ensure that the CCC proposal remains front and center in all planning and decision-making efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Schaus. I live on the 500 block of Washington Street. And I first like to state that I'm in a, all great support of Safe Harbor. I think it's a great thing that we have here for our community and for all the people that are experiencing homelessness. I volunteered there through our church. But my wife and I have seven children, and throughout the summer, they like to roam the neighborhood and have fun. and have fun with all their friends, have lemonade stands and all of that. So today, you guys have a big decision to make. And when you make that decision, I want you to think about that. How is that going to affect the children in the neighborhood that have had the freedom to roam through the alleys, have lemonade stands, play in the front yards, do what they normally do all summer long? I think voting to approve the SLUP is going to really impact and affect that decision and how we go about our everyday life all summer long. Like I said, I'm a very strong in support of Safe Harbor. The location isn't ideal, and I think we can all agree to that. So just please consider that when you go to vote tonight on approval of this SLUP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm a city resident, and I've heard a lot of discussion here tonight about people who have concerns about the safety and well-being of their family and livelihoods. And while I would like to be sympathetic towards that, I would like to point out that I also have a family, and I have a mother who happens to be rather mentally ill. And she struggles cognitively to understand what sorts of things are appropriate in public. So she tends to do things like make loud noises and strange gestures that people in this room may find alarming and unusual, especially if they have not been exposed to it before. And I would just like to say that while you may not want Safe Harbor to be around your house or in your backyard, the people who need Safe Harbor are also people. They are not just events that happen to you and your family members. They're not just things that are unpleasant to look at. They are people, human people with lives and needs. And I find it frankly quite selfish that you would not consider opening Safe Harbor year-round to be a viable opportunity to work towards these solutions that you all claim to want so badly. So I just don't understand how this is not something that is clearly a first step towards making Traverse City a better, happier, healthier place for all of its residents, not just the people who feel inconvenienced by this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak on behalf of myself. I'm a city resident, and I choose not to identify my name. I'm speaking as a healthcare worker who has witnessed addiction from a medical standpoint. I'm speaking as a child of two addicts, and I'm speaking as a person who was homeless for half of my life. I'm not here to expose my own trauma to you for sympathy. I'll save my own dignity today. I'm here to say that without a doubt, I do support opening Safe Harbor year-round, but I think that this is not the only route of action the city needs to be taking. I listen to the people speak of their children witnessing the effects of addiction, and I deeply sympathize with that. I really do. I know it's really hard. As a healthcare worker who has aided in recovery, and as a person whose parents are addicts, and as a person who has lost family members and loved ones to addiction, I empathize with that. And I'm really sorry that, like, this is a struggle for our community. However, I don't think the solution to protecting your children is by outcasting homeless people or hiding addiction from them. We do need shelters available year-round, but not only that. We need larger shelters, and we need outreach support to manage harm reduction specifically. But not only this, we need to stop demonizing addiction as a community. All of you who come up here and shame people for experiencing addiction, justifying your anger by identifying yourself as a taxpayer, are you really angry at people for being homeless or experiencing addiction, or should you be angry at the status quo that has made this struggle too dangerous to recover from in your own community? I apologize, but I don't remember who said it, but the right to say that we need to stop justifying our anger by saying, "At least I'm not an addict," as if addiction makes you less worthy. Addicts are still whole people. What is truly still frightening about seeing someone experiencing a mental health struggle for you? Does it inconvenience you? Is it hard to explain to your kids the struggles other people experience? Does that make you uncomfortable? I don't know. I just feel like as a parent, it's your responsibility to teach compassion and dignity in complex issues. If you have the energy to come up to the stand and say, "You just assume people like me are going to kidnap your kids," I'm just shocked, and I empathize with your story. I just see it as a need for your own personal recovery and a greater community outreach. If the issue is the needles, maybe we just need better trash cans instead of kicking people out. We speak of protecting the small children. I was a small child, and while I wish I didn't have to experience the hunger, the starvation, the death, and the pain, I don't mean to boost my own ego, but at least I came out of it knowing how to be good to people. I at least know how to love someone who is cast out or unable to be good to themselves. I don't push them further to the fringes of society just because I worry about my children knowing about them. I acknowledge that I would love a world where homelessness and addiction aren't a problem, but the solution isn't to just evict the pines when Safe Harbor, even if open year-round, doesn't have the capabilities to support the entire Traverse City homeless population, whether or not they choose to come. The solution isn't to hide your children from addiction and demonize addicts. The solution is to educate them and for you personally to fight for better support for those addicts. And then with all due respect, maybe you'll have children who grow up to show love and compassion towards those struggling, who grow up to care for them, as I have, as a result of what I've seen and felt and touched with my own hands, rather than someone who grows up to tell the struggling to leave and that they aren't wanted. Not only that, it's important that you recognize that children are addicts, that these children are once addicts.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm actually not finished.
Your time for commenting has elapsed, and we're treating everyone the same and giving the same amount of time to all speakers.
You haven't been treating the homeless the same, so I would like to actually finish.
Your time has elapsed. We're going to move on to the next speaker.
I'd actually just say that I would want you to fight for a better world for your children and the people who were children.
We're going to-
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's time for you to step away from the microphone.
I really don't think it is. I'm sorry.
I don't want you to push this. We'll have you removed if you won't follow the rules.
I just want to say that I want the people to fight for the city to provide proper support.
Ma'am, we will have you removed.
That was the one hundred percent.
Thank you for the final comment. We appreciate that. Thank you for that ending, that cap on that. Thank you.
My name is Justin Reed. I live at 63 Kajie Drive, apartment 1B. You know, I've been going to the city commission for several years, and it seems like every single time that folks at the Boardman Neighborhood gets upset about this is they say, "Well, there has to be a better solution." "Well, we don't want it there." Oh, but, you know, you don't understand that Traverse City is kind of, I don't know, there's neighborhoods everywhere because there's neighborhood associations or associations that are everywhere. And so there's nowhere for it to go. And somebody earlier was talking about them being a taxpayer. And CCC had a solution of, "Well, you know, we're going to, we're going to do this and that." And they did not have a plan, and the plan was to be in Garfield Township. Now, if you're a taxpayer, you would think that's a program that would be in Garfield Township. You don't want to spend money from Traverse City to Garfield Township? I mean, that just makes more sense. So with this homeless being year-round, this homeless center being year-round, I think that is a better solution. I think it's something that can be worked on progressively. Is it the best solution? Probably not. But nobody has came with a better solution within the Traverse City limits to put somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. How you doing? Tommy Corbett. I live at 428 Washington Street. Excuse me. I am a resident of Boardman Neighborhood and own and operate a couple businesses downtown Traverse City. As everyone here, I care deeply about the city. That's why we're all here and its future and the well-being of everyone who lives here, including those without housing currently. I haven't, I haven't heard any other solutions, so I assume this SLUP is well on its way to being approved. So, but I just want to say my piece of, that other, like other people said, that there are parents in the neighborhood that are very cautious, more and more cautious about letting their children outside. I have employees that are scared to walk to their cars alone after work because of encounters they've had in the parking lot or in the alleys. And so I guess what I wanted to say is that I think it's, this may be a temporary solution, but I think from somebody living right there, I think it's more urgent than you guys realize. Because how many times does, does a parent, like, need to feel scared for their child to, like, rethink where they're living? Or how many times does a business owner need to hear from their employees that they're worried about walking to their car before they rethink about where their store or their office is located? I have empathy for all the people here, and I want a great solution. But I really do, I just want to communicate that there are people that are really affected by this on a day-to-day basis, that I would just love a little, some more concern and some more engagement from, as we're coming up with a solution. So I appreciate all your guys' time. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Dana Henrick, and I, I live in downtown Traverse City. I wanted to show my support for keeping Safe Harbor open year-round. The issue with these community members seems to be homelessness, and the goal of most of these community agencies is to end homelessness, making, meaning making it brief and frequent in one time. Safe Harbor actively works towards that. Keeping Safe Harbor open year-round is a lifesaving decision. People experiencing homelessness are at much higher risk of overdose, especially when they're forced to sleep outside without access to consistent support. By staying open, Safe Harbor offers more than shelter. It gives people struggling with addiction a safe place to stay alive, long enough to seek treatment. People experiencing homelessness are at much- oh, wait, I said that already. Year-round access means a better chance at receiving lifesaving medications like Mercan, Suboxone, medical care, and connections to recovery services. The shelter's location may not be ideal, but the value of a human life cannot be weighed against convenience. We must remember that no one person's comfort or convenience is more valuable than another person's right to safety and shelter. Everyone deserves a chance to survive and here, and Safe Harbor can make that possible. If you want a better solution, then I urge you community members to work with these communities to create one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. A little nervous, so I might be doing more reading. But my name is Keisha Brick, and I live at 205 Wellington Street, just a short walk from Safe Harbor. I want to share with you a moment that speaks to why I'm here tonight. Not that long ago, I was outside with my four children, watching them ride their bikes up and down the alley, laughing as they raced with each other past the neighbor's fence. It was the kind of simple, joyful moment every parent cherishes. Then, walking down the alley, a man emerged, clearly disoriented, yelling and staggering. He wandered right up to us, muttering angrily. My children froze. I told them to go inside, and I stepped between them and the man until he moved on. I learned a neighbor had already called the paramedics, who arrived shortly thereafter because he'd been passed out in their yard. We were fortunate it ended there, but that fear, that sudden shift from peace to tension, has become, has become too far common, far too common. What would have happened if I wasn't outside with them? And this has not been an isolated incident. This is the reality many of us face in the neighborhood now. We are not lacking in compassion, but we're asking for balance, for a system that ensures the safety of families and the dignity of those in crisis. Please do not move forward with permanent, I'm sorry, any sort of permanent housing at Safe Harbor until the safety measures recommended by our own police department are fully implemented and a broader, community-informed solution is in place. A comprehensive safety plan is developed by the chief of police to support year-round operations, yet the city has not implemented the necessary ordinance changes outlined in that plan. Advancing permanent expansion without those safeguards is premature and frankly irresponsible. What was originally described as a temporary seasonal solution has evolved into a proposed permanent facility without fulfilling the basic commitments made to this community. This issue requires a city and county-wide approach, including a centralized, non-residential location with integrated services and appropriate oversight. Concentrating this burden on one neighborhood is both inequitable and unsustainable. I respectfully urge this commission to delay permanent approval until the full safety plan is enacted and a transparent, inclusive process is established. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Willard Killie, Traverse City resident. Currently not homeless. I've been 1,800 days homeless, and then out of the Safe Harbor and Goodwill Inn. I will say that both of the entities are a nightmare. Safe Harbor is absolute, it's horrific. There is no safety. There is no lock, place to put your belongings. There's maladaptive behavior. It's a dumping ground for the police, dumping ground for the CMH, for the mental ill. It's a free hotel for the Native Americans when they come and get wasted, or anybody else that wants to show up there and create just havoc, mayhem, and just complete disregard for any civil rights, personal well-being. I've been assaulted. I've been thrown out, exited. The Goodwill Inn exits you. They pride themselves on exiting you. And they say, behind the glass, "I have no exits and you do." But follow the money. Goodwill Inn got eight, five million dollars from Mackenzie Scott, Jeff Bezos's ex-wife. She gave Goodwill Industries $50 billion. This one got five million. Dan Burrow, the executive of Goodwill Inn, said he did homelessness, bought a bunch of housing with that five million. None of that ever happened. They got eight point six million in 2019. They incurred like $20 million last year. I don't know what the numbers are, but the current person in charge of their street outreach was Sekura Takana. She's now on the board of directors at Munson. Ryan Hannan is the independent contractor, tasked for this task. So it's a nightmare. They don't end homelessness. They created it. They brought it here, and they don't end it. It's a growing industry, they call it. And if you look at the money, the millions of dollars, in 2019, Goodwill Inn had $15 billion, or $15 million, excuse me, in assets. Now they're at $35 million in assets. Where are these assets? There is no homelessness. There's just people without a dwelling and a key. We're all on planet Earth. Planet Earth is our home. And I wanted to say right off the bat that there is no gap between my mind and yours, including everyone in this room. And that's the fact. We may be, we may appear to be in separate bodies and going our separate ways, doing separate things in life, but that is not the case. We are all one. We don't treat each other that way. In fact, we, I've talked to lawyers about all the atrocities that have occurred against my person, and they said I need at least five lawyers to tackle this issue. I've been denied meals at all the churches while homeless, led to two hernias, hypothermic convulsions, near death. Should have been pretty much dead. You know, 2019, they asked where's, why is Danielle died in the woods with a voucher in her pocket? She was an amazing woman, very brilliant. And then Ryan Hannan had the gall to say in the paper, "Well, that's nothing." 2019 deaths. We've had 31 here. This is absolutely atrocious. These people are not to be trusted. They're not to be given any of their money. You guys have given them a boatload of money. I've spoken to this commission for four and a half years straight. I've talked to Governor Whitmer. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Schmidt.
You name it. Bergman.
Thank you.
You can quit, please.
Okay.
We're not having comments from the audience. We're only addressing comments to the city commission.
That's where we draw the line?
No. You need to take your seat, and your time for speaking has ended.
He gets us to call him American strong.
Okay. If you continue speaking, you're going to be removed from this meeting. Chief Richmond, I'm going to ask you to escort this person from a meeting. Thank you.
Why do we just get to this?
That's it.
That's okay.
We're going to move on to the next speaker. If there's anyone else that wants to address the commission, please come to the podium. Okay, please begin.
Okay. Name's Cara Galvin. Live at 439 Webster Street. A lot of the same things have been said at many different meetings. Don't want to, like, have to reiterate the same thing over and over again, other than, I do have empathy for, I worked in the emergency room. I have empathy for everybody. I also have empathy for my neighbors and honestly myself, who I can't let my kids go in my front yard. I honestly get to a state of anxiousness if one of, I have three kids under eight. If I know one of them went into my front yard without, they're, they're still young, right, without me knowing. And it's because I've worked in the yard. I see how people, a homeless shelter is meant, if used correctly, to be for people only in terms of crisis, right? It's not meant for long-term housing. And I think anybody in housing will agree with that. Because of that, it's not meant to be in a place where people in crisis are, can affect other people in the surroundings, right? But I think my biggest thing that no one really has touched on is the SLUP itself. One of the measures is, shall not create excessive additional requirements for infrastructure, facilities, services provided at public expense. I don't really understand how we're continuing a SLUP that has already proven to be not compliant with this. We've heard time and time again about how many police calls are there, how the public library has to up their security at a large expense. I just don't see how we can continue doing something that's not meeting the SLUP itself. And- And I'm not trying to fear MAGA, but it—that really is the point we're at, of being able of how many incidents have happened in the last few months. And so going down the route of, how do we pass something that's already out of compliance? So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, anyone else that would like to address the commission? I want to ask one more time if there's anyone else. Okay, with that, Mayor Shammer, you can close the public hearing.
Sure. I just wanted to take one before I officially close it, to thank everyone who came up and shared everything from all of their perspectives. We do appreciate that. So with that, I'll close the public hearing. And now I will bring it over to the commission. We do have action to be taken, so are there any questions, or would somebody like to take a, make a motion to start the discussion? Go ahead, Heather.
I appreciate Commissioner TJ Andrews coming—
Well, really quick, do you have a question or a motion, so we can open up the conversation otherwise?
Yes, I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Can I start where I was starting?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
TJ Andrews from the county commission said that this was not a permanent or sustainable solution by design, and I totally agree with that. I appreciate the oversight that Safe Harbor is providing the county, and I hope that they will provide the city commission and the city that as well. But Safe Harbor is what we have while we're building an alternative, all-day, year-round shelter, or even better, permanent supportive housing. And I hope the neighborhoods can be patient and vigilant while that takes place. I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the volunteers and staff of Safe Harbor for taking care of these vulnerable citizens and offering them consistent support. However, in this first summer of Safe Harbor, how do we combine compassion with responsibility, as Betsy Corbett asked? How do we help Safe Harbor control or monitor what's going on around their shelter? How can we help them keep the area clean and clear of dangerous trash? Is it as easy as just providing more trash cans? Those are the questions I'm asking. What can we do to help the neighborhoods and the neighborhood businesses feel safer?
Do we have anybody who'd—I guess what I would question is to clarify a little bit more. Are you asking about bringing back some of the ordinances? I know that was mentioned, or are you asking what the plan is?
Anything at all. What can we do?
Okay. Do we have—okay. I know we added trash cans. Were there a couple of things you wanted to address with that, within that then?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, pending the SLUP's approval, you know, as issues arise, you know, as long as those are brought to our attention, we can add garbage cans, we can—we can do all sorts of different things to be strategic and be proactive.
Thank you. Do we have other questions, or would somebody like to make a motion? Tim?
I'll move that the order granting special land use permit number 25-SOUP-01 for a year-round emergency shelter at 517 Wellington Street, as requested by Safe Harbor of Grand Travers, Inc., and recommended by the City Planning Commission, be adopted, and further that the special land use permit number 14-SOUP-03 be rescinded.
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Stanley, or Commissioner Warner and Stanley, I believe there's an amendment that needs to happen.
Yeah, I believe the part about rescinding the previous was supposed to be taken out, that was not supposed to be part of the motion. That's addressed in the order granting itself.
So Commissioner Warner's motion would be, and that is recommended by the City Planning Commission, be adopted?
Correct.
Okay. Is that acceptable? Great. Okay. With that, we can now open up for any discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
In here, it has a staff recommendation of approval with conditions. What are specifically the conditions?
Lauren?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
What are the specific conditions? The staff recommendation, approval with conditions?
I believe that our planning director, Sean Winter, could speak to those specific conditions.
Yeah, good evening, Sean Winter, City Planning Director. There's three conditions that the Planning Commission included in their recommendation. One was a pretty generic one, that all necessary permits get secured. The other one is that they're allowed to operate it as a year-round shelter, and have until, I believe, November fifteenth to have the site improvements done. And then the third was that they would add a pedestrian connection from the new parking lot to the door at a location approved by the planning director. And just for the record, they've already been working on those drawings, and we have a draft copy of it, so they're moving in that direction.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments now? Go ahead, Tim.
Just a comment, and I think this came up at a previous city commission meeting and discussing kids in the Boardman neighborhood at the bus stop and such. Maybe it wasn't spoken directly to at that meeting, but I know there were emails and questions circulating with city staff and through the city manager. And one of the questions, I don't know whether I had asked it or somebody else asked it, was about additional police foot patrols. You know, there's a photograph in the old room, a couple doors that way, of a very tall police officer talking to, I don't know, a five-year-old on the street. It's that human connection. And our current police officers could make those human connections as well, both with the housed community as well as the unhoused community. I know it's an additional cost, but maybe there are certain times of day where it could be considered, you know, additional foot patrols to get to know both the housed and unhoused even better than they already do.
Thank you. Commissioner Stanley?
Thank you, Commissioner Warner, for those comments. Thank you to everyone who came here tonight to share your perspective and your experiences. And one of the things that keeps coming up, including for me, including regarding Commissioner Warner's request, is a lot of what we're discussing is our resources. And later this evening, we'll be discussing a 1% budget allocation for this straight Safe Streets. And at our last meeting, we had also talked about a permanent budget line item to support ending homelessness in Traverse City. If you want to look at a community's values, look at their budget. I think it's important to note that, as others have, that if this is approved this evening, this starts a clock ticking of two years of a pilot implementation. I don't think anyone would disagree that more robust supports and services directly to the unsheltered residents of our community where they are is a great solution. We also know that a homeless shelter is a big ask of any community. And I'm wondering if there is a mechanism by which Traverse City could direct funds to help support a campus-style shelter if such property were able to be secured in another municipality? Does that mechanism exist for us?
I don't know, as I sit here. But that's certainly something that we could collaborate on. The last I spoke with Community Cares Coalition representatives, I let them know that if their legal counsel wanted to reach out to me, I would be more than happy to brainstorm those types of ideas and solutions. So, you know, I love creative solutions, so if there's a way to do that, we can try to find it.
So those conversations have not been shut down by the city?
Absolutely not.
And then one other question I have is that Safe Harbor has seventy-four beds currently. Is there maximum occupancy? They're already at seventy under, having implemented the summer sort of schedule at this point. So that's a buffer of four beds, and there's roughly twenty to twenty-five people residing in the pines. What is the plan for the people who are in excess capacity, the people for whom Safe Harbor is not a viable option? What is the plan for that?
So the numbers change daily, and actually, the cleanup today took place, and Chief Richmond was at that cleanup, and might have some newer updated numbers that are very favorable and optimistic. And then we also have—I—we can also speak to other plans outside of Safe Harbor.
So, good evening. Matt Richmond, chief of police. And just before I start, I just want to say, as your chief, I took an oath to provide a safe community. I stand here saying, I hear your concerns and pledge to continue to work with community members and community partners to provide that safe community. The department's QRT and its sixty community partners have worked and will continue to work with the community's vulnerable population. This decision to ask for a year-round shelter and to close the pines was not a decision taken lightly. The safety concern, or the safety plan that I addressed the city commission with back in September, I will continue to work at to provide a safe community for Safe Harbor and the surrounding neighbors. Feedback that I have received as part of that safety plan is that things have improved, but I still hear the concerns that they're not what you expect. I will continue to work for you, and I will continue to work for the vulnerable people that we have within our community. Today, we had a cleanup within the pines. It was a yearly cleanup that we do twice a year. We do one in the spring and we do one in the fall. We've done that for several years, and today was a positive environment. We had twenty to thirty volunteers that showed up. We worked with Goodwill Outreach, the QRT, and our community police officers to determine which camps were abandoned and which were active. The abandoned camps, we cleaned up. We made contact with the active camps and asked if they had anything that they needed to get rid of. Also during the cleanup, there were numerous people that reside in the pines that were packing up and moving from the pines to their planned locations. Overall, again, it was a positive day. We had many conversations with the individuals there. We continue to work with them to establish their plans and to activate their plans. If the individuals that said that they would be out tonight, the number is down to around ten people in the pines. That is a significant drop from just earlier this week. And we continue to work with those individuals. Several of them have plans. Some are going to Safe Harbor. Some have plans to leave the state. There are detox availability for some of the individuals. So the number is dropping, and we will continue to work with those individuals. Some are on the list to get housing here shortly. So there are plans being activated, and we are continuously working with them.
Could I answer? Did you want more, something more specific?
So if this SLUP passes, the plan is to enforce no camping, the no camping ordinance in the pines. However, the no camping ordinance applies to parks, not just the pines, as we call it, but all over the city of Traverse City. But we know that Safe Harbor, even if it's open year-round, cannot accommodate an additional ten people, let alone seasonal fluctuations in the unsheltered population here. So recognizing that this is, that what we're voting on this evening is extending Safe Harbor's season to be year-round as a two-year pilot, not as a permanent solution, while the city works collectively with our surrounding communities to find a better path forward, I guess my request would be that homelessness does not become a criminal liability for the individuals who are experiencing this in our community, who do not have another place to go to for reasons including being banned from Safe Harbor, which is often associated with the, another reason, which is having endured profound trauma in their lives. I think as we talk about being compassionate and holding accountability, I think that is an accountability to ourselves that we need to be holding.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everyone who commented tonight. It seems to me that we need to look at the Safe Harbor SLUP decision in terms of a two-year pilot, as it's been proposed, that it needs to be viewed within, as just one piece of the solution, that also includes permanent supportive housing, that includes the actions of the Community Cares Coalition and the Homelessness Task Force that are seeking a much broader and more regional solution. But within the context of a pilot, it strikes me that this first summer is going to be critical. The outcome here is going to be predictive of how we approach homelessness in our area going forward. And for that reason, I feel that the steps that Grand Travers County has taken in terms of improving transparency, you know, if Safe Harbor is receiving public funding, I believe they have to step up their game in terms of accountability and reporting on the results of that public investment. But I also would advocate for having Chief Richmond's proposal for additional tools to ensure public safety brought back to this board for another vote. And I would also encourage the funding that it would be necessary to have more, whether it's foot patrol, vehicle patrol, but an increased public safety presence within the North Boardman neighborhood for this very critical first summer of pilot.
Thank you, Jackie. Well, really quickly, I'm going to call on people who haven't spoken yet, and then, Tim, I do know you've got your hand up. Go ahead. Mitch?
Yes. Since its establishment and continuing to be so, Safe Harbor is a temporary solution. But I would say more than as an organization or as a physical structure, it is a temporary solution for the people that use it. We have no single individual that has been staying at Safe Harbor every night that's been open for the last eleven years. Over ninety percent of those people that have come through Safe Harbor have been able to be placed in some other situation, whether it's permanent housing, whether it's finding them a connection with friends and family that they can live, whether it's connecting them with health care, with addiction treatment, with other resources that they need to get their lives back in order. This is the purpose of an emergency shelter like Safe Harbor, is to serve as a place for people to have some protection from the elements, but importantly, to connect people with the tools that they need to get their lives back together and get back on their feet and get into a housing and a better situation. Are there alternatives to Safe Harbor? In theory, yes. But in practice, we have people that used to be able to park, to camp in adjacent municipalities in areas that they're now prohibited from doing so. We have people that used to camp in other parts of Traverse City that are prohibited from doing so. We have people that camp in the pines, and that number's been going down, but with each day, fewer and fewer people will be permitted to camp there. Safe Harbor is the one location. If there were other churches, other community organizations that were allowed by zoning, had the funding and staffing resources to take even a portion of Safe Harbor's residents, that would be part of a solution. If an organization stepped forward and said, we have a site for an additional shelter within Traverse City or without Traverse City, that zoning permitted the shelter to operate there, that it actually worked as a sustainable solution for getting people that are currently unhoused connected to services and then transitioning them into housing, that would also be a solution. But those are not on the table right now. What is on the table is a proposal for Safe Harbor to be released from the regulatory burden of only being operating a few months out of the year. It does not require them to house every homeless person in all the area three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Thank you, Mitch.
And to some of the neighborhood concerns, we heard about people staying too long at the library. So as part of our community, we had conversations between Safe Harbor, between Central United Methodist— Methodist Church, between the other establishments in Traverse City to have shelters throughout the day, that people weren't staying solely at the library. We heard concerns about trash. So we installed multiple trash bins along 8th Street. And from my own recollections, there was more trash there, there's less trash now. Does that make, mean that there is no trash? No. There's plenty of trash along Bourbon River in places where there are ample trash bins. But progress has been made.
Thank you, Mitch. Tim, you had to put your hand up.
Yeah, I share Commissioner Stanley's concern regarding, say, the final few, whether it's 10 or fewer individuals in the pines as the deadline to vacate the pines approaches. If there's support from other members of the commission, I request of the city manager that maybe within the 24 hours of that deadline to vacate, if, without names, just anonymously, we as a commission could be updated by email of how many individuals have been identified not having plans, kind of the uncertainty, does it get down to two or three individuals that QRT, street outreach, just, yeah, they've talked to them, but they don't know what their plans are, like, what do we get down to? And then, day after enforcement starts, what occurred? Again, no names, no locations where they may be going, but just, these were the numbers, and this is how it played out. I would appreciate it, and if there's other interest here, thank you.
I think that would be appreciated. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Warner. I'm going to, oh, go ahead, Mark.
I just, I'm going to try to keep my cool and point out a few things. There's, there's some families that spoke, they've been here a very long time, and I want to recognize that longevity and investment in our community, and, and from what they've seen and what they care, and there's other families that are here that just got here. And we represent them all equally. My entire life, as far back as I know, there's always been a relative of mine sleeping under that trestle right there. Homelessness being populated in that area is nothing new. That comment should have been shut down, you guys, you know, and I know we're trying to keep it cool in here and light, but that, that was, if I'd be remiss if I didn't speak up as an Anishnaabe myself and for my relatives, and I won't go into explaining historical trauma, but when I explain to you that, you know, my grandmother slept under that trestle, my grandparents, my great aunts and uncles, there's restaurants in this town that are old enough that they weren't even allowed to eat there. And so I get the point that was trying to be made, but really, that should have been put to a stop. We don't, we don't need to single out anybody. However, that location, I just keep, like, looking at this map and thinking about the, like, the irony, or the, like, we call it a water treatment facility, but we all know what really flows there. And it's like, we can't even put it there. Right next to it, site of, you know, by non-homeless people, some of the worst crimes that have happened, hate crimes. And a couple blocks north, like, some of the worst crimes that have ever happened in this town, not by homeless people, somebody, somebody on the front porch, a house big enough to put five, six families in. I feel for this neighborhood, but there's nowhere to put this that is going to be away from people in our eight square miles. And if you live in the center of town, people are going to come through town. People are going to come through your neighborhood to get through downtown. I think there's solutions, as Commissioner Anderson suggested, bringing back a safety plan, anything that was labeled or a needle drop, other things, there's things that can be done to keep everybody safe. And just the point that I'm trying to make is that whether this is here or not, that doesn't always necessarily mean everybody is safe. I support police, you know, the police chief, and I look forward to another plan, and we'll get it right. Me, Gretch.
Thanks, Mark. I'm going to add some similar comments to Mark, I will limit mine because he is far more eloquent than I am tonight. I'm a lifelong resident here for my lifetime and my mother's, she's local too. And I'm going to push back a little, well, first, I'll say, if I'm not 300 feet from the Safe Harbor, I'm a toe away from it. And I don't put my address out everywhere because I am a single woman who lives alone. And don't advertise that, but if you want to find out, I file paperwork every year that I've, every time I run, it's out there legally. People can know how, verify that. This isn't something new. It's what, the difference is, is what we're finding in other communities around us, right? I did a whole report on this, that Antrim County, you know, Manzalona area, all of these , all of these areas surrounding us that everybody thinks of as rural and safe, have homeless people living in them. There are people without houses there, they just live in the fields, they live in the woods. And that's how it used to be here. Hoosier Valley, if you've lived here long enough, that's where people were living. It wasn't that in 89, the hospital closed down and everybody magically found a place to live, and, and now it's just become a problem. It's, that was where people were living, and then you had ordinances change within townships, and you had services getting more centrally located in the city, and you had churches that could not bear the, the structure anymore of changing weekly to host our shelters, because that's what it was for people who don't remember. There would be a couple bus, a couple vans out front here at the governmental center, and they would load people, and if they got there on time, and then they would take them to a church for the night. And bless the churches that did that, and all the volunteers who did that then, and still do it today. And we're very appreciative of them. But this, I understand that because we've had more centralized services and because the issues have grown over the last few years, it seems like this is something new. And it seems like maybe even in the last 10 years since we had Safe Harbor, we haven't been trying. But Commissioner, County Commissioner Andrews said that it was a historic vote that the county chose to support Safe Harbor for the next two years, and it was, because we have been doing this on our own as a city for 10 years. I was elected just before we had the first vote, and I sit here and say that in this one issue, I think probably the majority of the city would agree that I am not a good leader, because I'm kicking people out of the pines, because we have a camping ordinance, because we don't want them to live in those terrible, terrible conditions if Safe Harbor goes year-round. I'm a terrible person because I want, because we have a shelter in our city, because it's the only place that we could find one that had the property, as was mentioned by Mayor Potomac Wilson, next to the sewage treatment plant, that that's ruining our, ruining children's lives in this community. We have, I'm my own neighborhood. I see the syringes every day, too. I see all kinds of things every day. I'm on the Friends of Library Board, I work very closely with the library. I live 300 feet probably from the Safe Harbor, I'm bad with geography, it might be a little bit more. I see it as a reminder every day of all the work we still have to do. So I'm going to push back on Rudy who's saying that we're narrowing focus, ignoring other plans. There's no other plans sitting out there right now. There's no building that's ready to move into that we could invest this money into instead. But the pines are not livable the way they've been the last couple of years. I'm sorry if anybody's taken the tour, if anybody's done the cleaning out, it's not livable, it's not humane. And we, I wouldn't support this if I didn't have faith in our chief of police either, because we've heard here from our, our staff and from citizens even, that as points have been raised, we've got people working on these to try and address them, whether it be garbage, whether it be moving officers who are more centrally located to where people are at that moment, whatever it might be, I have faith that over the next critical summer here, as we get the data, and so by all means, please share. I hear so many people too say, "Well, I didn't bother to call because nobody cares," or "I don't think anybody wants to hear." We care, that's how, that's how we find the solutions, that's how we work on these projects. The SLP comes with a, with a committee that has to meet, there'll be feedback there, too. I know that the people of Safe Harbor don't want the neighborhoods to dislike them. I know that the people that are living near Safe Harbor don't want to feel like they're in conflict every time that they encounter people who are staying there. I walk through those neighborhood, the neighborhood every day, and it's, it's a very tough thing because I, the faults, the criticism of everybody out there is all valid. I'm not saying that as a poor me, I'm saying, I understand why people are worried about their kids. I understand why people think it's unfair that we are kicking, potentially kicking people out of a park, and I have hope and faith in our chief that he's going to exercise that judiciously as the numbers get to manageable levels. And I understand that people need a place to live, and that is where we are with this decision right now for a two-year pilot. What comes next and what's possible? I've seen more progress made in the last two years than I've seen in the last 10. And I have a lot of faith in where we're going and the organizations that are involved, and the leaders up here, and the leaders who have sat up here, who are still engaged in a lot of ways, and the leaders who are in part of all these nonprofits and doing all of this work. I really, truly believe that they are dedicated in a way that I have not seen before. But we have to, we can't, we can't have another summer in the pines like we've had, we just can't. It's not, it's not fair, it's not humane. So this is where we're at now, this is what we have for two years. I hope we have amazing ideas and solutions coming forward to us. I hope those millions of dollars will go into maybe supporting new housing units, because supportive housing is doing everything that people want to have done. But we have, I just have to remind you, we have a 0.5% vacancy for any place in this community, upper high-level, you know, houses, beautiful places on the bay, to low-income housing, 0.5%. That means even if people want to move into someplace else, or they've achieved some level of success and want to move out of the supportive housing, there's nowhere for them to go. Housing ends homelessness, it sounds true, but it's true. And so while we work on that greater solution, while we work on all these other things, this is where we are right now. And I'm, I'm sorry I went on a little bit of a diatribe tonight, but I'm, I am, I thank all the commissioners who weighed in, I thank everybody in the public who weighed in, because I know how deeply personal it is to everybody. And so, thank you for all for being here. This is, this is why we get paid the big bucks, I'll end on a little joke, but this is what we're faced with right now. So with my diatribe, we also want to talk, though. Okay. Any further comment from the commission? Any public comment on this item?
There, I just want to make sure that the commission understands that the findings of fact are all referenced in the motion, in the resolution, and that you're adopting the findings of fact as that indicates from the planning commission and with the conditions. I just want to say that publicly so everyone understands.
Thank you, that's a very technical thing. So do we have any other public comment on this? Please feel free to approach the podium.
And John McGretsch as well, what I said was taken out of context, I don't know how else to explain it. I've seen a lot of people that have housing that come there to show up there, to stay there, and create a lot of havoc. So I'd like to mention supportive housing. In an article in Record Eagle, I already said, everyone that's been in supportive housing, Keystone Square, Carson Village, wherever, and then New Yorkview, they've been there since the inception. One lady has lived there since 1989, never leaves. This is a five-year maximum, two-year minimum. There's a dollar match in program in the state of Michigan, the match is two to one, I just looked it up, three to one. So a year, you save 1,000 or 3,000, two years later, you have 6,000, that's a down payment, you're moving out, you're out of there. But that never happens. The law is still there. Drive by, look, the places are packed, they're not moving. Like you just said, they're nowhere to move. Nope, that was, there may be now, but that wasn't later. It used to be 60% of all real estate in Grand Traverse County has been vacant for over six months. That was probably three years ago, since my two-year recovery. A lot of illegal acts have taken place, and I've complained, do you name it, to the highest heavens, to the state senator, US senator, federal level, Whitmer, ignored, all of them. Met with Schmidt, ignored, everybody. And I've spoken here, I've spoken while homeless, I've come in after homeless, I've come in after being tortured, banned, a permanent ban from churches. There are more churches in the state of Michigan than there are homeless. All they have to do is adopt one person, do the least to the, to the, the least of your brother and you do of the me, right? They're not even following their own book. You don't have to follow the book, I get it. But you can't say that there's thousands of people in this town that cannot solve the problem for 60 or 190 people, however many are actually homeless, 60 here, 120 over there, that need a drawing. At one point, during COVID, Hannity said, "We hope nobody opens up their doors and lets them in because their numbers are, their numbers will go down." It's all about money for these people. It's all about cash. And you can look it up, I can spend some time sending you some more information if you like. I don't know what the solution is, but I guarantee the solution is, put the money that you're spending to these people, because they're getting $126 per person per day at the Goodwill Inn, that's 50 grand a year, in my four years, four and a half years, that's 200 grand, that's a lot of stalking that I've experienced. And you can fund a lot of mal, malfeasance behavior. And they recruit people. I've heard them say, "I told Ryan I would do Chicago, I wouldn't do New York." They go recruit people from other cities and bring them here. Other counties don't allow homelessness, they bring them here, "This place is amazing, it's awesome." They have an advertising budget at the Goodwill Inn. Really? Spend the money to end three persons homelessness, then six, then nine, then 12, then they're all done, then you're out of a job. But no, it's a full-time thing for them. They love the money, it's easy, they sit behind the glass, and it's, it's horrible. It is really a horrible experience. I don't know if anybody's been homeless. I've been homeless four and a half years, I walked Grand Traverse County, during all COVID, I ate every single meal outdoors. And I've been denied meals, I've been denied extra service, why I have a job? As soon as I've been denied.
Thank you for your comments.
The thing that I always hear is, "If you don't like it, move." But there's nowhere to go. There's no vacancies anywhere, and there are like four cross-rat, crosswalks right at that intersection, they don't use them. They won't push the light. They won't even walk where the lines are, I don't know if it's tainted land or what, but how do you think they're going to use trash cans if you put more out there when they're not using the dumpster in the pines area, when they vandalize the bathroom facilities that are provided there? It's just really frustrating because while addiction is a huge issue, and, I mean, my children have experienced it firsthand with their father, he has been arrested a number of times at both Safe Harbor and the Goodwill Inn, and nothing happens. He gets out a week, a month later. It doesn't matter if he's tried to kill me, what's happened? We need to start taking this seriously, because we're really just passing the buck at this point, and it sucks.
Thank you.
Justin Reed, so, same question. As is pointed out, that there's no vacancies in Traverse City, and it's already been pointed out that there's nowhere to put them at. There's, there's no building that's ready, there's no zoning, and, you know, the thought has been said, well, why don't we find another campus-style version of a homeless shelter? And, you know, if Garfield Township said yes, or any other township said yes, there would still have to be some sort of agreement between Traverse City and those other townships. And I, you know, that could happen, anything can happen. But one thing is, since we cannot go ahead and we've got a building height restriction in Traverse City, I'm the resident's vote for that, and so the consequence is, we can't build up, we have to build outwards. Well, that's what's happening to our townships, is that they're building outwards. And so part of the solution is, maybe we need to think about how we do our land deeds with any new buildings. If there is a building that's going up that is over 60 feet, and part of that discussion can be, well, you know, that developer promises this X amount of supportive and affordable housing, but he has to make it up with the condos, to where maybe there could be a land deed that would be reflective of the property with the housing component with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Darcy Pickman. I lived in Central Neighborhood for 27 years, and I live out on the peninsula now. I've been involved with many of the agencies here that have been helping the homeless, unhoused, and those suffering with mental health challenges. I just want to leave everybody with a thought about the collaboration today in the pines. It was, I, I'm not in favor of Safe Harbor full-time, but I am, because there is no but I am, because there is no alternative right now, I think that this is something that has to be done on a temporary basis. I know many of the people there, and I had conversations with them during the past year. And it was encouraging today, because we had, we had relationships with them. And many of them are going back home to other places. Thank you to Chief Richmond and the staff that was out there today. We are stakeholders. There is some very, very encouraging things going on. And with life skill classes and teaching people. There were many, many people there today that were helping us clean up. And it was really just warmed my heart. And so I think they want to work. I think they want to have their dignity back. I, I think we really need to embrace some of these people individually. We had some go back home. I helped pack up another gal that was going to go back and live with her mom. There are some really good, heartwarming stories. And so I just want everyone to know that things are changing. It is going to take a little bit of time. But I do think as all of the agencies, all of these stakeholders come together, we can find a solution, and we won't have to have Safe Harbor. We will have housing. There's so much going on in this city, and I just really believe that. I, I don't think that the coalitions, per se, with all the money. Again, I said it before. $1.1 million to keep Safe Harbor open for 12 months for 70 people, we could put them all in housing for $1,300 a month support services. They get vouchers for their utilities. They could all be in some of these apartments that are being built. I think that's what we should be looking forward to, having them in these apartments, subsidized apartments, with support services. So again, I just, I just want to leave with a positive note that there are lots of really good things happening. And I think, and I hope, and I pray, that they will be out of that neighborhood. And I was hoping it would only be a year. But if it has to be two years, let's get on this thing and get it going, and get them in housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Bringing it back, any comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone who came out tonight to speak on this. We do appreciate it. I'm going to be generous. If there's any students in the crowd, please feel free to approach staff over there for signatures, so you don't have to stay any longer. This was a good discussion for you to sit through. While we're letting it clear out, you can even come up here if anybody needs one. We'll take a, we'll take a quick, like, three-minute break for water refills, bathroom, and whatever else.
That is with the Housing Commission right now. So, it's supposed to. So, I know, I know. And that, but that's some of the federal funding to slow down too, right now, too, because it's the block grant that goes to the state. It's very understanding. Well, the, the block grant comes from the Fed to the state, and then the state passes it out to the local municipalities and stuff. I know, I know. So, yeah, well, that was in place long enough before that I'm hoping that that's just a slowing down of the process. A lot of the stuff that was approved before January, basically, the money's there. It just has to get released versus some of the newer things have been just totally taken away. Oh, yeah.
I know.
Um, who is it? NMCA, the, the collect, the Action Network, the Collective Network this year? They sometimes will help with that bill collection kind of stuff. Have you talked to them? Yeah, yeah. Hmm, no. Yeah, yeah, I would go. Yeah. Yeah, I would talk to the Housing Commission, because I think they'll be a little, they have, they have advocates to help, too. They should have an advocate that they can connect you with, too. So, yeah. Good luck. Let us know.
I'm going to give everybody a minute to call everybody back. We still have a few more items. I don't want us to be here all night.
We're looking to get a no vote change done. They've figured it out.
Better no?
Not for me.
What's that? No, you're.
It's just a no.
Okay. We have to be careful what we talk to if we're talking to the people, though. That's why you should reach out, because otherwise it's wrong robbing.
I'm just glad you've escaped.
For influencing votes. That's, it's OMA thing. I know, it's weird, isn't it? I know.
Have a good night.
Okay, and thank everybody for not straying too far. And with that, I'm going to bring the meeting back to order. Our next item in business is Old Business Number Two, which is the Five-Year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And Liz, why don't you start us off on that?
Hi, thank you, commissioners. Before you is a proposal from Tower Pingster. We reevaluated our bids and our matrix based on Commissioner Comment at the last meeting, and interviewed three other firms. And Michelle Hunt and Deb Allen are both here. They, they did that process. And we are feeling confident on the recommendation that is in your packet.
Okay. Do we have questions? Go ahead, Heather.
I, I'm going to make the motion. I move that the mayor and the city clerk execute an agreement with Tower Pingster in the amount of $30,000, $30,055, plus a 10% contingency for the total of $33,550 for the development of a Parks and Rec master plan with such agreement subject to the approval to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds available in Fund 499.
Thank you. Second, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Okay, we have motion and second. Any comments? Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I feel that though there was discussion at our last meeting on this topic, we did not have a consensus. There was no motion made. There was no vote held. And though City Manager Liz did take some direction, no official direction was given by this body. I attended last week's Parks and Rec meeting, during which the Parks and Rec Commission had discussion again on this topic. And they reiterated that they felt that the original proposal for Beckett and Rader was a scope more befitting the vision that they had for our Parks and Recreation planning for the future.
Okay. Either Michelle or Deb, if you want to maybe address where the differences are from the proposal last week and this week? My understanding was staff might take on a little bit more, but.
Sure. Hi, Michelle Hunt, Parks and Recreation Superintendent. So, the purpose, we went back out for bid in January to receive proposals for this project. So this would be the second time that we did. And when we created the request for proposals, I tailored the language, and the Parks Commission supported the RFP. They had approval over that. And it was to make sure that we had a plan that was acceptable to turn into the Department of Natural Resources to be eligible for grants. And through the RFP process, we also made room for a more robust ADA site assessment, because that's very important to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And while it is important to have a plan that, you know, checks all the boxes for the DNR so that we can submit that and have it be approved, Beckett and Rader's proposal did allow for us to go a little bit more above and beyond with community engagement and the opportunity to work with the events that we have in town. They are a local firm who was heavily involved in the city's master plan process, so they're very familiar with what we discussed in the interview as survey fatigue, and how they know the residents of Traverse City, and how we can have a more engaged process that speaks to everything that we're trying to accomplish. So those are the considerations that we took and brought my recommendation for Beckett and Rader to the Parks and Rec Commission. So the Parks and Rec Commission approved a contract with Beckett and Rader at our March meeting. And then that came before the city commission.
Okay. Any other questions on this, or comments? Go ahead, Jackie.
Just comment. I appreciate the efforts that were made to identify projects from the last master plan that required DNR funding through grant. And it came up to a total of about $2.8 million, I think, over a five-year period. And so the, it strikes me that the scope of this proposal puts it in roughly 1% of proceeds perspective. So this, this to me feels like a better fit for the likely benefits from the master, from the Parks Master Plan, and just in proportion with, you know, cost benefit. So thank you for gathering that extra data. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jackie. Anything else from commissioners? Any public comment on this item?
Hey, I'm Scott Murray, 630 South Union Street, Traverse City resident, also on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have great parks here in Traverse City. I love our parks. I think parks are a critical part of our social infrastructure. You want a testament to that. It's not a city park, but part of a whole park is you spend some time walking your bike, or walking your dog, or riding your bike, or walking around the board, and then you'll see all sorts of people out enjoying our facilities in this town. So it's a really wholesome thing. This park planning process and trying to select someone to help us with the master plan actually began, at least for me, the day after the election, when me and another Parks Commissioner, as well as Michelle and a few other city leaders met, and interviewed our first round of candidates. Some of them flew in to actually present to us. And they had pretty exciting plans for us, and ways we were going to look at our parks and do things in ways that we'd known about before. And I was super excited about it, because not only do you know these plans play for themselves, but you also know that when you make a plan, you're kind of charting the course for the future. And I think there's things we can do to make our parks even better. So after we had three qualified firms come in to present, we selected the one that we thought best met our needs. And a few months later, we were told that that wasn't going to work anymore, that we were going to scale back the budget considerably, which makes me shake my head a little bit, because, you know, if we knew this wasn't going to match kind of what we wanted to pay, maybe that shouldn't have been part of the RFP process in the first place, and we shouldn't have had these people fly out to present to us, but anyway. So we came back, and based upon the qualified judgment of our Parks and Recreation Commissioner, or Manager, and also the Assistant City Manager, we selected Beckett and Rader. And then we're told again, that's still too much. And now we're basically down to pick in one of the three lowest bids. And I just feel like that is not a process that makes sense. I feel like that is a process that doesn't give the respect to our parks and the leaders who evaluated these plans. And in some ways, I prefer that we just pause, and maybe even potentially, I know this is a little bit radical, but go year without having a master plan in place, so we can actually put the thought in and put the process around, select an affair, and put together a plan that actually meets our needs. So I hope you please consider that, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Bring it back to the commission. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We'll call.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
No.
Commissioner Treadwell?
No.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you for all the comments on that. I do appreciate it came from staff in this case. All right, moving on here. Item number three is a presentation, or, sorry, or continued discussions on economic development services. I'll hand that over to you, Liz.
Thank you. At the April 14th city study session, representatives from Traverse Connect made a presentation to City Commission on Economic Development Services. And we were asked to take a look at their proposal, introduce Commissioner comments and concerns, and to bring that back at a future meeting. So we are here again, and we do have Warren Call, CEO of Traverse Connect, here with us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Warren Call with Traverse Connect. Thanks for the time this evening on a, obviously, a very busy schedule. As City Manager indicated, we were recently with you at a study session and provided an in-depth review of the proposal and the partnership work that we've done previously. We've taken the feedback that's been received since that study session and added a scope of work summary to the proposal to provide more detail as requested. I can briefly cover the two sections of that scope of work, and then take any questions you might have. First, I think it's important to outline that some of the things that, that we work on, on your behalf, are ongoing projects. The, the economic development proposals that are before you do reflect the fact that, as a community, we've developed a set of long-term goals. And not just the city in partnership with Traverse Connect, but the city in partnership with Traverse Connect, and several other public sector bodies locally, as well as state, are working together on kind of traditional economic development projects that are, that are ongoing, and they, they do vary. And I want to be, I want to touch on that. They're variable and subject to what's going on in business developments, what's going on in public advocacy, what's going on with talent attraction and development needs. So I've provided, in the scope of work, some examples of, of some of the different projects that we've worked with, or, excuse me, worked on, on behalf of our public sector partners, and as well as the reporting, the reporting timeline that details those developments. I think that it's, I can't tell you, and I want to be really honest about this, I can't tell you year to year exactly what those projects will look like, because they do come up and they, and they differ, right? We have many business expansion projects that have been developed, that have been detailed in the reporting we've done to you. And those, you know, a business owner, a new business, an entrepreneur with an idea, we can't always predict exactly what those are going to look like. But what we can say is that we're always working on those things. Some of the economic development topics that we talked about last time, you know, whether it's freshwater fish pass, the advanced air mobility, all of those have the opportunity to generate new, new projects. And we, again, we provide the regular reporting on those, as well as the details of all the past initiatives. So what we can tell you for sure, and we're certain, is that it's our role, contractually here, to seek out all of those opportunities, right? With new businesses, with researchers that want to do pilot projects, et cetera. And we're here to partner with the city to, to work on your behalf on those things. And of course, we're always more than open to, you know, further ideas and feedback that you have as to what we can be doing better, or more, or differently. So that's, that's the first section of ongoing projects. The second section, again, in, in. The second section, again, in consultation and discussion with some of the commissioners and the comments that we received after the last study session, we've outlined some things that Traverse Connect can do specifically that are directly support some of the key regional collaboration and year-round economic diversity objectives that we discussed last time. So, there are some things that are related to the Blue Tech Trade Mission, so that's very much in line with some of the work we've previously done. I think there's an opportunity to bring in entrepreneurs to consider some opportunity here. There is a new event that we would like to do this summer that is related to mobility and outdoor technology and outdoor recreation. Our ongoing economic strategy sessions, suggestion from one of the commissioners, to think about where can we highlight green, clean and green technology in our community and how it's being utilized to encourage other businesses to do so. And then expos and national outreach. So, some things that we would like to do to further the region's economic development goals with some larger nationwide conferences. And then redevelopment site activities. So, this is something that, again, commissioner recommendation, that we look at where are there some specific sites within the city and also within the region that need some focus and attention to be redeveloped. And then ongoing discussions that we could put on a recurring timeline with the city leadership to make sure that we're addressing the needs and the goals that you have on a continuing basis. I just covered quite a bit there. I'll pause to see if there's questions either on that additional scope of work that we added or if there's other questions regarding the agreement in the packet.
Any takers? Okay. Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, I, first, I want to say thank you for the additional detail on the scope of work. I think that that helped me a great deal in understanding the deliverables from this contract and that was valuable. At the moment, I am looking at the timing of this commitment primarily, and this comment is as much for my fellow commissioners as it is for you, Mr. Call, and viewing it in the context that two weeks from today, we should be receiving the wrap-up report from our almost year-long strategic planning process. And I understand that economic development is one of six pillars of that strategic plan and we expect to flesh out action plans against each of those pillars so that we have a better sense of how to allocate all of our resources that the city has. So, my thoughts are really two on this subject. Should we be making a commitment of this size to economic development sort of out of context of the overall strategic plan? And then, secondly, I know within your proposal is viewing Traverse Connect as sort of a convener of the regional collaboration that's a really important part of the strategic plan. And I wonder for us to come at that from an economic development standpoint, is that correct? Or do we need a broader community focus for whoever represents the city and those regional collaborations? So, those are my remaining thoughts and I share those more with the commission than expecting you to respond in any way. Thank you. You're confused.
Yeah, to one of your points, I think I would say, having had this conversation about how we bring the regional players together over the last 10 years or so, I think that Traverse Connect has done the best job of anybody who stepped up in the region to do anything like that, whether it's under economic development or, I mean, with the broad brush of economic development, we've seen this play out, like getting the workforce housing pilot language changed or added in Lansing. That was some spearhead done by the Northern Chamber Alliance and Traverse Connect, but tons of regional governments, local governments, townships, county and everybody were in on that to push for that kind of change too. So, if we want to look at that through the lens of economic development, I think that also kind of touches on some of the community matters like housing issues that we've also talked about. You know, I think at this cost, if we found that for $50,000 a year, we found that maybe there was something super specialized we'd want to look into, I think we'd have some flexibility in the budget to add somebody else if we needed it. But in that sense, I think at that cost, there are the ones I've seen so far that have worked on it and actually come through with anything. We've had a lot of people say they were going to do things and then we've tried it ourselves and nobody wants to come sit with us in the corner. So, I, you know, I don't know if that, I'm not saying that's a definitive of anything, but I would offer that up as far as you asking what we thought about that. That would be my two cents on that question you asked.
I wonder if our city manager would like to chime in here and talk about recent communication that she had with Traverse Connect about a problem that she was having and she reached out to Traverse Connect to just ask the question.
I, well, yes.
Can you remember this conversation?
I do remember this conversation. Yeah, you know, we're always talking about different funding sources and leveraging different opportunities with different organizations. And one of our staff said, you know, maybe this different organization could help with some road funding. I'm just, I'll leave it a little more nebulous, but I wasn't sure if that was an appropriate connection to make or if that was the right thing to do. So, I just picked up the phone and called Warren and I said, hey, I was given this recommendation on some road funding and he said, absolutely not. That is not the route to go and here are the reasons why. And it saved me a potentially embarrassing interaction, but I can't know everything there is to know about all of these different organizations, their funding mechanisms, how they work, how they work together and how we can work together. So, that was a, you know, it was just really nice that I could pick up the phone and ask a question. But beyond that, when we talk about like bringing money back to this region, the advocacy day that we had in Lansing, I was really blown away. I had never done anything like that before. Last year was the first year I wasn't able to attend, so I sent the Assistant City Manager on my behalf. But now having attended it, I wouldn't miss it again. I wouldn't miss it again because the power of having a dozen or two dozen CEOs from organizations all around the region collaborating together on core topics in a very organized and strategic way, and that cannot be done by those individual organizations alone. Traverse Connect, the Community Foundation and others put that together. They know the way of the land. They know how to get those appointments with senior leadership and they were listening. And I was thinking, oh, we're going to sit in the room and these senators and reps are going to be looking at their iPhones, you know? But they were really listening because it was organized. We were prepared. We used the time on the bus together to prepare our strategies and handoffs and who was going to take which topic and why and when. And when we had to divide and conquer, those were all planned. And that day was a very long day, but I came home feeling really good about the asks that were made and getting those resources back to this region. And Traverse Connect was a big part of that.
Great question. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I do appreciate your ability to work at a regional level and your talks about looking beyond that. Since we are elected and responsible for the city of Traverse City, but as the economic hub of the surrounding region, most of the people that are working in Traverse City every day or commuting in are living in the surrounding area. So, we need somebody that's able to take a higher level look at various regional issues. But to that point, Traverse Connect has its own boundaries and there can be, I know people that commute from, say, Elk Rapids or Bel Air or Mansalona to Traverse City to work every day, but that is covered by Northern Lakes Chamber Alliance. So, are you going, or are you somebody else from Traverse Connect going to be attending their economic symposium this Friday?
Yes, we will. In fact, myself and our Director of Government Relations will be there. I think important to note that, yes, obviously, a lot of our economic development work is either four-county or five-county depending on where we border with Northern Lakes Economic Alliance. But Northern Lakes Economic Alliance, as well as, you know, 18 other organizations, are all part of our Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance. So, they're at the table with us and we work together very closely on those things. In fact, there was just a fun kind of handoff thing the other day where, three years ago, this company reached out to us and they started looking at an opportunity to expand here. And then they were like, you know, it might be a better fit in Emmett County. And so, we handed it off to Northern Lakes Economic Alliance. Well, now that same company, after having started something in Emmett County, is now coming back to us as a referral back from Northern Lakes Economic Alliance that, you know, we work together to hopefully have another development here.
I love to hear those regional partnerships. Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Heather.
I would like to make the same small edit two places in this contract. Do I need to make the motion first before I make that suggestion?
You can make the suggestion and then we can figure out how to incorporate it.
Yeah, maybe it'd just be as amended. Okay, it's in the recital section and I'm pretty sure I had it in what I sent to Warren a couple of weeks ago. But I'd like to have the word sustainable in the first whereas, the whereas the city desires to encourage the sustainable commercial and economic development. And also in the second whereas, in the last line there, business attraction efforts and supporting sustainable development and infrastructure enhancements. The definition of sustainable is conserving an ecological balance by avoiding depletion of natural resources. This is in alignment with the core goals that are down below and I think that this is what speaks to encouraging a vibrant, all-season city, higher wages, good jobs and campaigns that attract people who appreciate our urban forest, our natural resources and our friendly, family-friendly neighborhoods. So, I would like to have that word placed twice in the recital.
Is that?
No objection and I apologize that that was an oversight that I do believe you mentioned previously.
Great, thank you.
So, Benjamin, now that that's been pointed out, would the motion just read as it is or would we have to add something like as amended?
We can just leave it as is.
Okay. And the only other thing I would say for anybody wanting to make the motion is it's from the blank fund?
Right.
Yeah, sorry. So, I wanted to give the commission a choice. The previous two contracts with Traverse Connect were paid for out of the Economic Development Fund. And I also know that the discussions of our fund balance in our general fund being a little high have also come up. So, I wanted to, those were the two choices that I felt were the most appropriate, either the general fund or the Economic Development Fund.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
About that question, which is if we don't use the Economic Development Fund to fund the economic development, what does the Economic Development Fund fund?
Well, I'm not going to say anything. So, we do have our treasurer and we do have some, my understanding is the Economic Development Fund was named by a staff member, I believe the previous finance director, but has also been used as an inter-loan fund. So, maybe we consider renaming it so that it's not confusing. It doesn't need to, I don't feel like it's not restricted to being used just for economic development.
Yes, okay. That was my question.
Well, I guess my question would be is if, Tim, did you, were you about to ask something too?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna say, my question would be if the fund isn't, the fund, the Economic Development Fund isn't really an economic development fund, then should we, would it help if we either drew it down now and renamed it or is that something we should revisit? And I guess, would it help us to take it out of the fund at this point or is it something that we can just rename? It doesn't have to be like spent down and reallocated or anything like that. Sorry, Warren, you're in the middle of this very nuanced conversation.
No, I think Heidi Sheffey, our Finance Director and Treasurer is going to answer that question.
Yeah, so my, one of my conversations with Phil Sweetmeyer, that is revenue from when we sold the lots and the industrial parks. So, it was renamed Economic Development Fund. It's prime, like Liz said, inner development or inner fund loans, but we could use it whatever we want if you wanted to draw it down or keep it there. I know there's been discussion on inner fund loans with other funding mechanisms. So, you can combine them, separate them, whatever this board or commission would like. We are okay with it, Treasury.
I'd support, while we still have the Economic Development Fund, this is economic development using it that way. To me, partly, yes, we have general fund, Economic Development Fund, and as we'll see in the budget, we have all sorts of funds. And while technically we might calculate our fund balance only counting these funds, that's where we have a difference with the folks that audit us because they look at everything. So, they're not going to distinguish between an Economic Development Fund and a general fund. It's still money available for us to spend. So, I'd rather just use it out of the Economic Development Fund and at some future date, we could have the discussion about, do we still want to call it that? Call it something else? Eliminate it? Whatever that may be. That's just me. Thanks.
Well, in light of that feedback and Commissioner Shaw's edits, important edits, I'll just go ahead and throw out that if anybody wants to make the motion that the competitive bidding process be waived and that the mayor and city clerk execute a three-year agreement with Traverse Connect to provide economic development services the amount of $52,500 for the period of May 1st, 2025 through April 30th, 2026 with a 3% annual increase in each of the subsequent two yearly renewals with such agreement subject to its approval as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney with funds available in the Economic Development Fund. Something along that.
That sounds like a great motion that I just made.
Great, okay. Thank you, Commissioners Treadwell and Shaw. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, just a comment. I do appreciate the work that Mr. Call put into adding the addendum, the extra page there, scope of work with deliverables. In a parallel universe, I would have appreciated if this had been more of a negotiation between Mr. Call and the city manager. It was not so much a, hey, this is what they're bringing to the city and here's the price tag, but more, hey, this is what we have to offer and from the city manager's standpoint, then this is what our interests are and find some common ground, find an appropriate price on it. It wasn't so, here's what we have, do you want to buy it? Sort of approach. It sounds kind of crass, but that's more of a negotiation if there had been more time. But with that said, with the added effort and work, I will support it.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Any other comments? Go ahead, Jackie.
Yes, I would like to support it, but I won't be able to. The combination of the context of the strategic plan, which I feel we're short-circuiting our ability to be responsive to those findings. And then also, my concerns about lack of an RFP for Economic Development Services persist. So, that's where I'll be coming from shortly.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes, motion passes. All right, and moving on now to update, this is, we had canceled our study session last week, I believe it was, because of worry about attendance. We had some things pop up with our commissioners. So, we are having our study session on the East Side Placemaking Project now. And I see Commissioner, or Director, Winter's already up there, so.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Here's some tech stuff. So, Sean Winter, City Planning Director. Yep, this is a reschedule from last week, just a brief update on the East Side Placemaking Project. So, if recall from last year, this actually came from two separate citizen or constituent-initiated efforts. The first one came out of the Mobility Action Plan Leadership Team, which through that process was asked to come up with two to three tactical urbanism projects. So, tactical urbanism projects are low-cost, high-impact, they are quick to implement, they don't require permanent construction typically, and they're a way to help envision how a place can be used differently than how it had been historically. So, this term tactical urbanism also goes by pilot project, demonstration projects, guerrilla urbanism, there's a lot of different names for it. Also, around that same time, we had a number of the businesses located around Athan Garfield inquire about a social district. So, as you know, those came out of the MLCC's changes that were implemented as a response to the COVID pandemic and all the limitations. So, this was approved and started operating, but as we'll go through here in a few minutes, there wasn't a whole lot to report on last year because we didn't actually get it approved until July, at which point we were able to start ordering materials. As you've heard throughout a lot of presentations, there's extremely long lead times. So, many of our products didn't even arrive until after the season had closed. So, with that said, we were kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for all that stuff to come in. We were getting a lot of questions from the businesses in that area whether or not we'd be able to open up by Labor Day. be able to open up by Labor Day. They'd been approved by the city to participate in the MLCC, they'd been approved by the state, so they were just waiting for us to give them the green light. And we understood why, it's last big holiday weekend of the summer. So we were able to meet their constituents' desires, or the constituents' desires. We had to make do with some of the materials we had because, again, we didn't have everything delivered at the time. So I just want to say thank you to the Festival Foundation. They loaned us all their traffic barriers because our planters didn't come in to block off the traffic, so you can see them in white in the background, so we appreciated that. And just a big thanks to Chris Weber of the Streets Division and Michelle Hunt of the Parks and Rec Division for all the work that they put in last year and this year with their staff of pulling this off amongst their very, very busy schedules. So we got it out there. Staff took a couple of pictures when it first set up, so these are both on the north side by Common Ground. So on the left picture, you can see the barriers were placed in such a way that the platted alleyway remained open, so the businesses had full access to their parking lots in between them on the sides. We did get the umbrellas installed, they are able to bend and rotate, so you can position them with the sun accordingly. They do have solar panels on the top, and the arms are actually LED lights, and they provide quite a bit of decent light there. The space was used by a number of community members. These are pictures taken from the socials of the various businesses that had posted them up there. So we see people of all ages kind of gathering, as well as friends, couples, parents, kids, things like that. Now, the key thing is that little sticker right there, so they have to have that on every cup that they serve within the social district indicating which business it's sold from and the date. We printed off, I believe, 500 initially for everyone, and then we gave them the graphic from there, and so they just began reprinting their own at the rate that they needed. And most of them, well, we only had two participants last year, and they went through it quite quickly, those 500. And if you've ever been out there in the evening, it is a great vantage point for catching a sunset. We caught this as the engineering and planning departments went and had a little get-together one day after work out there. So recapping some of the seasons, some things that we were able to find there, that the community did use the space, the public space, as intended, as reinvented, as a place to gather and be with one another. We learned that the two adjacent neighborhood associations had had their neighborhood meetings there, as well as a potluck in the social district. Again, these are public spaces akin to a park or a public plaza where anyone can come and occupy the space. The Traverse City Track Club tends to use it quite frequently as the starting and stopping point of their Wednesday night group runs. We heard about different offices having happy hours, local residents expressing their appreciation for having that space to gather. And I think one of the more impactful stories I heard, we do have a pretty large Ukrainian refugee population here in this community, many of whom visit Common Ground every weekend morning to pick up their daily bread and stuff. And there was one man they shared who was almost in tears because it reminded him of kind of like the community aspect in his homeland that he had to flee because of the war. So just the fact that we were able to bring that kind of comfort to him through this process, to me, that one alone makes it kind of a success. So moving into 2025, in terms of programming, we've done lots of listening as to how the community wants to use the space, meeting with all the businesses in the social district throughout the winter. They have brought to us some proposed management plan edits. So this is a PowerPoint from last week when it was a study session, so there was no action to be had, but something to consider, and I'll come back to these as a summary at the end. But in the management plan, if smoking could be prohibited, that has been a request, as well as allowing for reusable beverage vessels. So we modeled off the state's ordinance where it said single-use cups, so that's what we used, but really the state only requires that it not be glass. So one of the businesses has inquired about using metal cups that they can wash and reuse instead of generating the waste and stuff like that, but we'd want to put that in the management plan since it speaks to it specifically. Some other organizations, again, have expressed some of their planned usage for the summer. The neighborhood associations and the track club are planning on continuing to utilize the space. Business anniversary events, so Tankspace had their one-year anniversary this week, so they were planning to really, this last weekend, really take advantage of that. They had discussed using their mug club for some volunteer planting days to, you know, get some people out there and help alleviate streets and the parks divisions with their workload. And I thought this was kind of the coolest one. The piano store there has partnered with Interlochen for the Interlochen Lang International Music Foundation, piano intensive, so they're bringing 17 students from around the world for a really intense piano... I'm not a music person, lessons, I guess, you know, throughout the beginning of the spring. And it's going to cap with a series of recitals that they will be doing throughout the city and the region. But the program is called Citizen Artist, Becoming a Citizen Artist, so they are going to be doing one of the recitals in the social district where the piano store is located. In terms of some amenities that have changed from last year, we've learned from the businesses there how people use the space and got some insights. So all our back-ordered amenities have arrived. We did order six more picnic tables, we had 12 last year. I know when planning and engineering went there, we noticed for ourselves, our party occupied more than one table. But because of the space and the number of tables we had, the next table was about 20 feet away, so the extra people either had to stand next to us or have their own conversation. So we heard that that was an issue for many of the businesses as well, so we ordered additional picnic tables that we set out, as well as additional umbrellas to go up with those tables and to replace the one that mysteriously disappeared last year. And we did get some backup brackets because we had at least one break throughout the year. We have two solar power benches that have been purchased. I got an update today that they're still being assembled, but they should be placed out shortly, as well as the bike racks. One thing that was requested was some sort of vertical delineator along the outside of the social district closest to the travel lane. So some of the businesses use their networks to secure some wood barrels, like the type you would see at a winery or something like that, that could be placed along there with a delineator rope, ideally to place some additional signage to remind people that there is no smoking there, as well as arrows to encourage people to cross at the intersection. And the planters will be planted, they're not planted yet. We just, we still had frost this weekend, so we're waiting closer to Memorial Day, but all the plants have been ordered at this time. So just to wrap up, and then I'll turn it over to those who have attended today to share their thoughts, just wanting to get direction, whether or not the commission supports prohibiting smoking in the East Side Placemaking Project and the reusable beverage containers. We also had two requests. One came through a city commissioner that was directed to us requesting to extend it down Garfield. They own a business further down there, and they noted that Garfield is not really a residential street, so that's up for your consideration and direction, as well as a request to extend it westward along East Eight Street to Michigan Avenue. And that one came from the individual who either bought or is interested in buying the former Fifth Third Bank property right there. So with that, I will turn it over to those two business owners who came to share their experience with you today. The first one I have is Andrew Kidwell Bricks. He is the owner with his spouse of Tankspace, along with Earth and Ales. They just had their first baby about a month ago, so really grateful that he pulled away. He was texting me cute pictures of her, but first new baby in our neighborhood in a long time, so we're really excited about that. And then after him, we have Leslie Billby, owner of Oakwood Proper Burgers.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate your work and the work of all the staff in kind of making this happen. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Sean just shared, just to sort of summarize a little bit, though I do feel like we got just enough of a season last year to figure out a couple of tweaks that I think have led to good improvements in kind of the look and feel of the space, at least where we are so far. I mean, I set it up on Thursday, we're here on Monday, we're just getting started. I'm excited to have Common Good participating this year, just having the two of the three for the short season last year. I feel like we weren't getting the full sort of potential of it. So in the sense that like this was intended to be sort of a pilot or a test, I think we're going to get our true pilot in this season. We've got a little more awareness because we had that brief season last year, and I think we've made a much more attractive inviting space. And mostly, I'm here if you guys have questions and want to dig into any of this in more detail. So other than that, I won't take up any more of your time at this point.
Thank you.
Good evening. I echo mostly what my cohort over there, Andrew, said tonight. But first, I would like to thank city staff, my goodness, the rain that they set up the park benches in and the planters. It was one wet day, and so they worked really hard to do that, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the presentation from Mr. Winter and that you are going to consider some of the changes with, hopefully, consider the smoking and the signage and whatnot. That would be a positive thing in the social district. I've witnessed anecdotally positive things last year in the very brief time that the social district happened. Just last night, when I left work at 7:00, there were several families outside with young children enjoying the space, and what a welcome sight that is on the east side. As a resident and a business owner, I really enjoyed that myself. Finally, just echoing also what Andrew said, in the spirit of the study session that we missed last week, if you have questions, I invite you to ask us. We are the businesses and the owners that live and work in that area, and we're happy to come back and fire away any answers we can do to help. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie and Andrew, as they pointed out, they are both residents and business owners around that district. So I wanted to, before we got into the presentation, ask, did anybody have questions specifically for our business owners? If you don't, it's okay, I just didn't want to get into like...
I have a question for Director Winter.
I'll get to that just a second. I just wanted to give a chance in case they want to slide out or anything, if they waited patiently, and I think everything else is kind of more the meat of the process that we'll get into, but did anybody have any questions for the business owners and their experiences? Looks like we're pretty satisfied, so thank you both for sticking around and sharing that and being willing to come to this meeting. And so I guess Director Winter has asked us some questions too, so I wanted to kind of tackle those first, though. So one of the questions that's been asked of us, and I think we've heard a lot of people supporting it, is are we interested in having a smoking prohibition being brought to us? Is that... See, vigorous head nodding, yes. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, smoking like combustible cigarettes and cigars, for sure. But does that include vaping? One of the stores over on the... Yes, but one of the stores included in this social district is a vape shop. It's my vape shop. I have not been a smoker for 10 years. I am a vapor, and it's a whole different... It's a whole different rung full of whatever. And, you know, you're sitting outside, I like to vape.
Well, right now, I think smoking... Well, that would be a question for Lauren, if there's a smoking prohibition, does that include vaping in the state of Michigan?
I'll have to look at that.
Okay.
I don't know for sure.
Well, that... Go ahead, Tim. I was gonna say, there seems to be interest in that, but we'll definitely have to look into this. Go ahead, Tim.
Just to clarify, like, is the non-smoking proposal for the Commons area, which on our map in front of us is hashed in yellow, or the entire district?
Good question.
It would be intended for the Commons area.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Great. So I'm seeing vigorous head nodding yes to that, just to kind of knock that off the list of some kind of... Well, at least bring it back, does it count for vaping? We'd be interested at least picking it up and having that conversation and potentially supporting that. So... And then the other one that I just saw a lot of and heard a lot of either support or at least not objection to was the reusable vessels permitted. Is that something we're all... I'm seeing some head nodding on that one, too. Okay, so I think that would be a clear directive that bring that one back. I see a thumbs up from Andrew, he seems excited about that over in the corner since I have the perspective from here. Okay, so that, I just wanted to clarify those two because they seem to be things that business owners, as well as the kind of findings and comments that we had been seeing coming through emails, supported. So with that, we can open up to some general questions about the report here. Go ahead, Heather.
Yes, for Director Winter, has the city, and that doesn't include the DDA, I want to exclude the DDA from this, has the city ever done any placemaking before?
Yeah, I don't know, I've only been here four years, so it's hard to say. Admittedly, most of it has been downtown, where a lot of the placemaking has, but I mean, placemaking can be defined as planting street trees, that defines a place. It can be making parks improvements. So I would say in that regard, yeah, we do a lot of that to make our community better for our residents.
Okay, well, you kind of shot yourself in the foot, but all right, I get it.
How did I shoot myself in the foot?
Well, I wanted to say that this is the first time that anyone's like, oh, it's ever been done.
Well, it's the first time in his tenure, we know, so.
Yeah, I don't know what to say.
So what... My second question had to do with the vaping, and, you know, particularly since there is a business right there in the Commons that is a vape store. But the third one has to do with the laundromat problem. So what is the solution that would be amenable to the laundromat to continue the placemaking common space there?
What is the problem that you're specifically talking about?
The laundromat?
Yeah.
That they want to be able to pull cars?
Which problem? Like, because some of those we've looked through, like, there was a claim that the placemaking project took away a handicap parking space. That is not a true issue. It was never a handicap parking space, it was never signed as that, never had an ADA ramp. The city's ADA coordinator actually looked into it with the county, and they're actually in violation by not providing ADA in their off-street parking. So they were looking to use the city's public parking to meet their ADA requirements. They also own a private lot, not just on the west side, but on the backside of their building with a rear access, so someone can just park in right there and walk in all the same. So that was like the main issue. The one issue that someone sent an email complaining about that they like to leave their young kid in the car when they do laundry, like, I don't know how we fix that. I don't know that that's even allowable, to be honest, so.
I wasn't aware about the ADA issues.
Yeah, it was never... And then we did get a complaint about the mailbox that is located there. That one, we contacted the postmaster before any of this started to let them know that was, it's not actually a drive-up mailbox, if you're familiar with it. It's on the passenger side on the backside of the curb. They said that's a walk-up mailbox. Actually, parking in the parking lot behind it puts you geographically closer than the service drive would. So those are the main problems that we had encountered, and we kind of vetted those out.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead. We'll have Tim and then Mitch.
More a request for consideration, like, as the season goes on, working with business owners, identify some spots to potentially plant trees, like actually in the ground, even if it's a pothole that just needs to be dug a little bit deeper.
I guarantee they know all the places they want trees already. That's what's come up a lot.
Wherever it might be there, like permanent, not just in a giant planter that has to come and go necessarily. Yeah, that might mean that a parking spot in the other season is not available, or maybe it's toward the curb, I don't know where overhead wires are, but just to consider because to me, that would maybe not be the first couple of years, but if this continues to add a lot to the space. Thanks.
Yeah, I would love to do that. I will say, there is a long-term vision for most of these constituents, and they would like to see a permanent improvement there. And they understand that this is one step to get there, but if we can look and find some spots to get some trees in the near time, we can definitely talk with Parks and Rec. I know they're in their planting period right now, so.
Great. Mitch?
Yes, getting into what will probably be, not just now, but in future discussions, a major topic. I'm very curious how you not derived of the need for expansion because that was part of the vision for as long as social district has been proposed, but extending it in only the two directions that have been proposed and only as far west as Michigan, but going as far as Boone, which is much farther along Garfield.
Again, this is all coming from your constituents, that's their ask, so I had no thought on it. This is specific things that they have asked of you. So if you want to take it one step further, by all means, I mean, I was just in Grand Rapids again Thursday, Friday, where almost the entirety of their downtown is social district. Been there for, I don't know, probably the last three years, number of times. I've never seen anyone even walking around with a drink, you know, we talked about this a year ago. It's not the impact that people think it probably is, so.
So I guess what I would put to the commission based on some of the questions is, with the two proposals of expansion coming from kind of owners and or users, would we be interested in having that proposal brought to us, maybe with, like we've heard here from the owners, some of the request information brought to us, or is that something that people don't have an appetite for right now? Jackie?
I have no appetite for expansion on this area until we receive some of the data that was originally promised about what the business results have been. You know, there have been anecdotal information from a very limited number, just three businesses.
We were all invited to share their response, though. I just want to make sure that that was...
May I finish?
Sure, I just want to make sure that that was clarified for the public. Sure. I just want to make sure that that was clarified for the public.
Thank you. If we go back to your presentation to the commission on April 29th of 2024, you indicated that the city commission may revoke the Social District at any time. So our intention would be to work with the property owners throughout the summer, making any tweaks to the placemaking project to better suit them and the public at large. And then, of course, meet with them at the end of the season to get their feedback and come back to the city commission to discuss that and see how you may want or not want to address that for the coming year. You got a late start, so we only have two months' worth of data available. Common Grounds, in their verbatim feedback to you, provided data about their sales increase, as well as, I believe, the number of tickets and their increase. And I think it would be reasonable for us to request similar information. Just two months' worth of, you know, open your books and tell us what economic benefit was gained. Were there more sales, more sales per ticket? Were there more employees? Were there more sales tax paid? You know, some indicator that this is working and that it's working enough for us to overlook the negative feedback from the business that has the longest history in that location, who said that he got absolutely no benefit and was actually harmed by the Social District. So I think, I think before we even begin to think about an expansion, we should be understanding much more deeply what the results of this have been and are likely to be. Maybe we wait until we have a full year of experience and some solid basis, other than anecdotal reports, to be making decisions with.
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to the city manager about this a lot and the constituents that have been there. We've yet still to get any from this body direction on the metrics that you want. So Katie and my office, from this body, not from an individual in a passing conversation with the city manager, because that's what was discussed, is that this body needs to decide what data they want that we can take back to them. Because we've been meeting with them, and I've said, they want metrics. I don't know what they are. Here's this Google sheet. Fill it out. We sent it to everyone.
Why didn't you ask?
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna object for a second here. That's, well, both of you, please. That this was brought up. It was requested by one commissioner. There was not a motion to please bring this back. I personally don't want to, I'm not gonna base any decision off of two months' worth of data for something that was hurriedly put together that we've just gotten all the pieces of. Also, I'm not very comfortable personally, and others might disagree, but then I would take an action of this body to, say, open your books to one particular group of businesses, when we don't do that to anybody else for any other kind of improvements in our community, DDA or general, or neighborhoods. We don't, you know, any investments that we make in our community, we don't ask for people to open up books or things like that. I would love to hear some reports at the end anecdotally. I'd like to see police reports, anything else that might be there already. But I've never had that kind of request for that much overreach, and I am not comfortable with it, frankly. And so if others want to have that, I, you know, I'm one voice and I'm one vote. But that makes me very, very uncomfortable for what we see asked of other businesses for a $30,000 investment in long-term fixes.
If I may, we're hearing only from four businesses. There are so many other businesses who are impacted by this, starting with the people who share the back parking lot, Beacon Cremation, Quick Print. What about Prouse Financial? What about Cordwood Barbecue? What about Rounds Restaurant, just outside the boundary? Have they been impacted by this? You know, I think, I think that-
Yeah, so-
I think that we need to hear much more broadly from the surrounding businesses, and we need some numbers. I think that-
Would you compel Rounds to respond if they do not fill out the survey?
I would, I would visit them. I would pick up the phone and call them. I would, I would reach out to them.
Personally, you're gonna do that?
Sure.
Well, I'm not, that's not collected, that's not neutral collected data either. So I think that we have heard that in the report that there was a survey sent out and it was elected, and we do that a lot. I'm not saying that we can't ask for data at all. I'm not saying that this just goes along merrily and we don't get any feedback. But I think the request that was just made and the claim of missing data, when that wasn't a consensus of the commission, and that's where I'm saying that I don't think that that's exactly where we're at. So I think that's why we'd want to see us have a discussion about, in this case, the, whether it's the expansion and having then some more information, more justification. That would be then more outreach of if we were gonna do this, wow, would that affect other businesses? How would that have anything else there? But we need to have consensus from seven of us, of the majority of the seven of us, of what we're looking for and not having had these random conversations without directive. Lauren asks us a lot of, am I hearing from you that you want X and Y? And am I hearing from the majority that you're looking for this? I didn't hear an appetite for this. I think that's where we have to get to with what we're looking for with this. And I'm not looking for that. Well, I guess what I would say to anybody is, in the context of checking in on this project and potentially discussing, not a guarantee of expanding this, would that be where we'd want to have some of that information? I'm not thinking tonight we're going to dig into that as deeply as we probably need to. Mark, you just raised your hand.
I just want to just stick to the point that this body gives direction as a whole and never as an individual. And then the next, if we're gonna start getting into that and entertaining it, then maybe when appropriate, a motion should be made for that. And then I will provide my thoughts on qualitative versus quantitative data and what we'll sift through to accept.
So what I would like to propose, due to the lateness of the hour and the discussions that have been raised so far, is, am I hearing at least that the discussion, and not to have it happen, but in the discussion of having more data and information that we have and brought back to us that would be under the umbrella of possible expansion, but would be looking for some information in the time in between? I think commissioners could email what they are looking for. That would be a conversation we would have of, do we agree or not that this is data we're looking for to make this decision? And then we could move forward with the decision process. Does that sound reasonable?
Let me understand what you're asking for. No decision tonight?
Correct.
And that each of us individually send our request for further information for decision-making purposes, over what time period? And when, when do you want it? And who does it go to?
Well, I think we'd have an update on that next week, because I don't know what the calendar looks like for the next few weeks with the budget for meetings. So I don't want to say by the end of next week, and we won't talk about it for a month, you know? So we'll get that to you all, and we'll announce at the next week's meeting. Potentially, an email could be sent out. From that, we'll have an aggregate conversation, too, so of what we all agree we want to have or not have. And then that will be what the decided matrix is that we're looking at.
Okay, that works.
Sorry, Sean, just because it's late and I get brain drained quick. What are the hours that the alcohol is allowed to be served?
It starts in the morning, because I know Common, I don't have the exact times offhand. I'd have to look at the management plan. I don't have my computer in front of me. But does it go till 10:00?
10:00 PM.
9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yeah, most of the businesses are already closed by then in that area, so.
Okay, Heather.
Are we supposed to be commenting on all four of the proposals or just the expansion?
No, yeah, well, I mean, I think it'd be a conversation we'd have in general, but with the idea of, are we happy with the current boundaries that are there? Are we, what would an expansion, here from the people who want the expansion potentially, since it was requested by citizens and owners? And looking at that. But in context of this is, what information, we're telling, we would be directing staff of what information we were looking at. But I would actually probably have us have a preliminary conversation to agree on that consensus. But to give everybody kind of a general clearinghouse of places to put these ideas, if anybody cares, get together, have the conversation, create a deliberative process for this, because one was, we don't have that right now, so. So, long story short, it's 10 o'clock at night, and we will get the schedule coming up and see where this might possibly, follow-up conversation on this might be slated. And from there, we will give you a date where we'd like some feedback and some information, and then we'll continue the discussion. So, does that make sense? Or does that, is that agreeable to everybody? And does it make sense, because it's late and I don't know if I'm making sense at this point? Okay, thank you. Mitch?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so moving on, let's go to new business, proposed budget. It has been presented to us. This is our kind of report and file that for the study session we'll have for next week. Liz, did you want to do a quick highlight, or?
Tonight, you need to set the public hearing for May 19th. We outlined all the next steps in the executive summary, and I look forward to getting feedback on the budget. The earlier the better, so that we can be prepared, I can work with the staff to respond to questions and concerns. And I know that I've offered to set up one-on-ones with, and it can be two-on-ones if we need to double up, but if any, I did offer to do some sitting down with individual commissioners to talk about the staffing recommendations and just see clarity if there were additional questions, so that we would have an opportunity to make adjustments again before the 19th.
Okay, so that's the plan. Does anybody want to make a motion for the public hearing, or do we have more questions around that? I know most of us have been through this, we've all been through this process before, but as a refresher, we don't really do much, other than have it handed to us tonight and set the hearing, and then next week there'll be a study session. Go ahead, mine.
I'll make the recommendation that the discussion and approval of the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, including the Six Year Capital Improvements Plan, all proposed tax levies for the city and the Downtown Development Authority, and also a public hearing regarding the Traverse City Light and Power and Downtown Development Authority budgets, be scheduled for public hearing on May 19th, 2025.
Second, thank you, Commissioners Stanley and Shaw. Any discussion on this? Straightforward. Go ahead, Jackie, go ahead, sorry.
Just a reminder that that's the same day that the results of our strategic plan will be presented. And I'm looking for opportunities to use that to guide our spending decisions for 25-26.
Thank you for that. That's a good point. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Oh, go ahead.
Richard Robbins speaking on behalf of the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. Thank you to the Complete Streets Ad-Hoc Committee and the city staff for including the proposed 1% set aside for non-motorized infrastructure improvements. This is consistent with other forward-thinking cities and townships across the country who recognize that the, how important this is for creating the ability for safe use of non-motorized transportation options. We will continue to work with the city collaboratively with the neighborhood associations, the city staff, and all other engaged partners to ensure that these funds are used correctly.
Good. Everybody's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so my point is, is we will continue to work collaboratively with neighborhood associations, city staff, and all other engaged partners to ensure that these funds are used correctly and judiciously. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Dana Flukeft. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. I'm also a city resident, 4015 Webster. I'm here today to express my strong support of the budget amendments proposed at today's meeting, particularly the commissioner-requested item allocating 1% of the annual general fund to complete streets. This dedicated funding represents a meaningful investment in the safety, accessibility, and livability of our community. By prioritizing infrastructure that serves all users, whether walking, biking, rolling, driving, or using public transit, we can make our streets safer and more welcoming for everyone. We also respectfully recommend that all proposed uses of the 1% allocation be reviewed and discussed by the existing Complete Streets Ad-Hoc Committee to ensure alignment with community needs and planning principles. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing what comes of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So again, we'll have a study session next week, and then that public hearing will be the 19th. So lots of budget conversation, and speaking of, here are our budget amendments. Go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, so in front of you, you have your budget amendments for the end of our fiscal year 2025. And I just wanted to generally say that the adjustments include general fund appropriations to address department deficits due to unplanned or over-budgeted activity, and bring the Budget Stabilization Fund to $1 million, reallocation of fiscal year '25-'26 reductions, several department priority items that were reduced in the '25-'26 budget. We propose funding those in this budget to meet those original requests. And then we did have a few commissioner-requested items, as we just heard, requested by the Complete Streets Ad-Hoc, an annual 1% general fund revenue dedication to Complete Streets, and as requested by Commissioner Shaw on behalf of the Arts Commission, an additional contribution to help covered planned projects. So you have, of course, in your packet, all of the adjustments that are being recommended, and we are recommending adoption of the adjustment in the amount of $2,385,000.
I think we had some questions out of time, but does anybody have any questions now? Or would anybody like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion that the budget amendments is outlined in the communication from the city treasurer, finance director, as submitted with the official meeting materials for the city commissioners, May 5th, 2025, meeting be approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Second, thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
And then go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, unless Mayor Pro Tim Wilson wants to start off about the Complete Streets, I'll give my best recollection in my delirious state. But we had a very good conversation at the ad hoc committee, I felt, with the three of us, as well as staff. I mean, it was really a staff-initiated discussion about funding to help, like, if we are to move forward with this Complete Streets effort. I think the 1% maybe came from other communities, so modeling it after that. But I believe, you know, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson especially asked kind of, well, why 1%? You know, prices are going up. Is 1%? You know, it is a made-up number, but if other communities have used it, it's at least a starting point. But part of the conversation, I felt, was not trapping ourselves into, this is an absolute budget. Oh, we had these streets. We were doing, our Complete Streets budget doesn't allow us to do it, therefore, we're not doing it. It's more an acknowledgement that if we're going to do a street, and it's a complete street, it's going to cost more. We're likely doing more. And so I'm supportive of it in that sense, that it's a starting point, and it's an acknowledgement that, you know, our projects will likely cost a bit more if we're trying to make it best for all users. Like, close, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, just that maybe in a response to some of the emails that we got saying that, you know, we're already trying to complete the sidewalks, and how does that not consist of a complete street? And that through the ad hoc, I think we've come up with a better definition of that. And so, yeah, it's late. I'm in support. Not much more to say.
The budget amendment, 10 o'clock.
Yeah, well, I thank you guys out for the ad hoc for working on that and coming forward with us. I think it's a really good start and a really great solution to start with, that never thought of before, and we're glad you guys are bringing it forward. So any other commissioner comments on the, or the motion? Speaking of being late and not being able to talk, any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, there we go. We got a 1%. Good to go. Good start. I think we're all agreement on that. And on to the Public Arts Trust Fund here. And is that, Liz, or is that going to be?
That's me.
That's Commissioner Shaw.
That's what I thought, so.
Oh, boy. Talk about delirious is definitely the word. So I was, this was really confusing. I asked Liz for 100% boost to the Arts Commission budget, and she said, yes, here's $15,000. And then I was, and then we were at an Arts Commission meeting, and we were looking kind of at the budget that we had there, and Lauren there was saying, well, it's only $15,000 that you get from the city, or from the DDA. I don't know. So then I talked to Deb, and Deb said, oh, well, the city only gives you $15,000, and the DDA gives you another $15,000, and that covers admin. And then I looked at the budget docs that we got on Thursday, and it said 30, I was totally confused. So it's, it's all been, it's all been figured out. The city general fund- The city general fund, from the operating fund, gives the Arts Commission 30,000 a year, and it has since 2019. The DDA has only contributed money twice in those years, and that was in 2019, and again in 2022, and that was $15,000 each of those years, and they were for specific projects. So, while I appreciate that this is the first budget increase that's been asked for in, what, 10 years? What's on the books right now for an extra 15,000, bringing it up to 45,000, is not even a living wage in Traverse City. And I realize that the Arts Commission budget right now is really healthy, it's got $154,000 in it, but that's because the Arts Commission has been saving money for three years to put on this Fall Mural Festival. And when that mural festival is over with and paid for next year, there's going to be zero, and we're back to saving money again. So it does seem a shame to me that Traverse City is allocating so little of its budget to the arts when, I believe, many of us up here acknowledge that we have a tourism problem that focuses on drinking and partying, and that may be even dam, may even be damaging our cultural legacy, and that, like Grand Rapids, that puts so much money into its arts, public art, we could allocate 1% of our budget, just like complete streets. I mean, we seem to be willing to do that and possibly attract a different kind of tourism. Also, the master plan, in almost every neighborhood in the master plan, it calls for more public art. So I'm not going to go that far, although I will say that East Lansing has implemented a, an ordinance called Percent for Art, and it requires that 1% of the cost of certain public capital improvement projects be allocated as public art. So maybe that's something we can talk about in the future. But for right now, I would really like to get double the, the budget that we've been having for the last 10 years, from 30 to 60, which was what I asked for in the first place, and didn't understand what was being asked for. Kaitlin Early is here. You did get some documents in your packet, and Kaitlin Early has been on the Arts Commission since, so she knows a lot more about this than I do, and she would like to say a few words.
Well, Kaitlin, you were kind enough to wait this long, so we will give you the mic with our braindead selves up here. But we love the arts, so.
Oh, excited. Well, thank you. I'm very happy to be here. My son is going through a sleep regression, so I am super tired. So I'm sorry if none of this makes sense, but I did want to just illustrate an initiative that we're working towards, that we have been saving money for over the last four years as part of our strategic plan that we underwent in 2021 and 2022. We do have a very robust and healthy fund balance that I am hopeful to completely deplete in the next 18 months. So I think in your packet is included some information about the North Boardman Creative Initiative, so that is showing, you know, over the amount, the expenses would be over the amount of the fund balance, even with the potential doubling. And we just kind of walked through a component of that, as Heather mentioned, is the inaugural mural festival. We hope to make that a biannual event, and as a placemaking initiative in different neighborhoods throughout Traverse City, we chose the North Boardman to get started in following the 2020 study, the Healthy Eight Street Initiative. So this is kind of using objectives that were set up from that study, that I'm so grateful that laid the groundwork for this. But specific objectives from the Healthy Eight Street pointed to public art opportunities for placemaking, and ways to create gateways, and increase multimodal infrastructure, and different ways to move about the community. So I can go into detail if you'd like, or if you have any questions, but I just wanted to give that, a little update for that consideration. And also say, we are, we have received state funding supporting this project, we have a federal grant that has been submitted, and I needed to go after additional grant funding to be able to meet the match, because I wasn't able to present a match based off of the annual allocation from the general fund, so.
Great. Do we have questions for Kaitlin while she's up here?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And I think, so this is a proposal for support for this coming budget, correct? Or, yeah?
Yes.
Great.
Unless we could get it in for last year, like we did for.
Just allocated 15. For last year. Okay. So this is, this is a request for next year.
Yes.
Which is, you know, great. I think it's a.
That's wonderful.
Great conversation. Let's just say this, since we're going, the budget's been presented, and we're going into it, does anybody sternly ask to object to the request? I don't think so either. I think we've seen how great art can be to add to any of our projects and what you all are doing, so thank you for that.
I think we have a question from our.
Can I just clarify? Are you looking for 30 or 45? Because there's 30 in the current year's budget, plus 15 gets you to 45, and next year's budget, there's 30.
You want 60.
60. I want double for next year.
Okay, so we want 30 additional in next year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that didn't meet with much objection, so I think that's great. Thank you. All right, then we will now move on to our appointments, and we've got one here for Historic Districts, and that looks like that was Mayor Pro-Tom Wilson, Commissioner Shaw, and Commissioner Treadwell. So it looks like Jackie Shinners to be reappointed. I've appointed her in the past, she's a great choice. Does anybody want to have any comment, or just make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
No, go ahead.
Jackie Shinners be reappointed to the term expiring 2030, 2020, June 30th, 2028, on Historic Districts Commission, as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Shaw, Mayor Pro-Tom Wilson, and Commissioner Treadwell.
Support.
All right. Thank you for that, guys.
He's been doing a good job so far.
Any public comment on this item? Bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So now we'll move on to, let's see, sorry, I have to remember, I opened this up, and border zoning appeals, reappointments. And that looks like we've got Merrick Roman and Jeff Cockfield, and that was Commissioner Stanley, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Shaw. Do we want to share anything, or make a motion?
There were only two applicants for those two positions, and so they're being recommended to be reappointed. So I'll make the motion that Merrick Roman and Jeff Cockfield be reappointed to the terms expiring June 30th, 2028, on the border zoning appeals, as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Heather Shaw, Commissioner Mike Stanley, and Commissioner Tim Warner.
Support.
Thank you for that. Any further comment?
The VCA meeting next week has already been canceled.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now we've got an appointment to the Arts Commission, the soon-to-be fully funded, it sounds like.
Oh, my.
To, I've got Mayor Pro-Tom Wilson, Commissioner Shaw, and Commissioner Warner. I'll take the motion, or any comments?
I move that Brian Michael Ray to be appointed to the term expiring May 18th, 2027, seat previously held by John Hoysington.
Josh.
Yeah, that's right. Josh.
It's a typo here, but yeah.
Josh. Yeah. Sorry.
On the TC Arts Commission, as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Shaw, Mayor Pro-Tom Wilson, and Commissioner Warner.
Support.
Thank you. Any further comment on that?
I just said, only one applicant, one vacancy.
Oh, wow.
Superb applicant, huh?
Superb.
All right. Any public comment on this item? All right, bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And formality here, for all the good work that you guys have done, we're gonna, the Brown Bridge Trust ballot, da-da-da, proposal, sorry, making this.
Not well at this, thank you, Tim, for saving me.
So, working with staff, we asked that, in the potentiality that the full commission says, yeah, let's put it on November's ballot, that this ad hoc will need to continue so that we can work on public outreach and how to come up with a list of priority park investments. So with that, I'll make the motion that a city commission ad hoc committee regarding Brown Bridge Trust Fund ballot proposal be reestablished for another six months, with the committee to expire November 18, 2025, and that Commissioners Tim Warner, Heather Shaw, and Mitchell Treadwell be reappointed to such committee with Commissioner Tim Warner to serve as chair.
Support.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for all of your work on that so far, and getting us through to the finish line. Any other comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will leave our, have our time here for reports and announcements, given the lightness of the hour, brevity is the soul of wit and kindness tonight, but if anybody wants to report out quickly on anything, or can hear from it next week. We'll make special allotments next week with the study session. I'm not here, so Mark will have to do that. And then finally, we have some reserved public comment tonight. Here, you know, you've been waiting patiently. If you want to go ahead and start it, you have 15 minutes.
Gary Swayston, hopefully I won't fall asleep like Trump. I'm older than him. So, anyway, first I want to thank Benjamin, Heather, and Tim for sending me some information about the Brown Bridge possibility of getting money from that for the parks. But I would ask you to look at, when I'm asking for the sidewalks around, along the east side of M-37, to look at that separate from the issue of the parks. Because if I wanted to just walk to town, I have to walk along the highway, M-37 highway, and go up the Front Street, then I can walk into town. If I want to get to Bryant Park, I have to do that same thing, and then I have to walk back. When the park's right across from my street, one of the first signs that one is leaving the city is the absence of sidewalks, in my opinion, and this seems to be reinforced by the, since I see so many people accelerating as they leave town, as they round that curve. I've even had people pass me, and it's a no pass, I'm going to turn on my street, Peninsula Court, and they'll go in that other lane, which is no passing, because they're heading home out the Peninsula, apparently, and they're in a hurry. I've had a couple females do that, soccer moms or something, and they're in a hurry to get home, I don't know. And I have a lot of people on my butt, leaping their horns and stuff. In order to have the speed limit lowered, a speed study has to be done by MDOT, and they kind of did one because I've bugged them for a couple years, but the fact is, if they do a speed study, they have to raise or lower the speed limit to whatever, 85% of the people are going. And they did one, and people are averaging, 85% of the people are averaging 38.5 on that stretch. Just a little, but in fact, if you went 40, the police probably wouldn't even pull you over. That's only five over. If you're on the other side of Front Street on Garfield, you'd be going 15 over the speed limit. And I know, it's always because it's a state highway, they have different rules. M-37 is also known as Division Street in town, apparently separating the east and the west side. We have our own little Division Street, separating people in the Peninsula High School neighborhood to getting to Bryant Park across from that. I'm not sure why a sidewalk along Eastern Avenue to M-37 seems to be a priority, priority, when there's also, there's also, when there's also, a sidewalk along Eastern Avenue to Peninsula Court, to the new sidewalk at Anderson, that's what I'm proposing. If you walk from Milliken Drive from the high school, go down to M-37, and you're walking, you think you can cross there and walk to the park, you're breaking the law. Law says if you're walking, this is MCL 257.659, state law says, if you're walking or running, you have to be on the side of the, you have to go opposing traffic. If you're riding your bike, then you got to go with traffic. So if you walk down Eastern, get down to M-37, and you want to get to Bryant Park, you have to walk on the east side all the way to Front Street right now. Apparently, I think you might be talking about putting, crossing by Anderson Road. We still have, we still have to walk around the sidewalk. Can you help me get this to the next one? I did a video of me doing it, but first I want to comment on these signs. Let's go to the next one, yeah. What does it say? Share the road and all that? Well, as you get to that curve, there's nothing to share. And there's a truck by it right now. About the next one, too. See, that mailbox almost takes the, I think the bike lane narrows down to about two feet right there, and the mailbox is sticking out, and you can see that truck right there. There's no way you could ride a bike through there. Dangerous to walk in, too. Let's see what the next one is. All right, let's go on. This is Jeff, who lives with, with me in my place, and he rode his bike down there.
You actually have to ride in the road before you're going to hit a mailbox?
I'd have to be the mailman living there, too. That's got to be a tricky deal. In fact, on my, on my street, the old mailman, I said, he used to back his truck into my driveway, because people, they expect, you know, they're, they're going to go up to 35 or whatever they're going to go, they're going, they don't expect people turning right there. So I put my turn signal, they still get, they expect you to take that turn at 35, I think, and my driveway comes up pretty quick. All right, this is the one that, I hope you've seen this, but show them again. That was last summer with the girls coming from the high school.
They're on.
Right out of the corner, Pennsylvania. Some are already there, some are already at the park, the girls from the high school.
They're trying to get there.
Yeah, they're trying to get there, yeah. And my dog ran down there. I went.
Oh.
This is the scary part. Look at them, trying to see where they can go.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Are there two in it?
You know, I always wonder why people wouldn't stop, but there's no lines there for them to stop, so they figure they just keep going. They will eventually, somebody will stop. I'm down there talking to them, but I said something before, so I eliminated that. Check, somebody stopped there.
Oh, wow.
I mean, nobody, basically, nobody walks across it, they run, because of that curve in there, cars coming. Anyway, then we have the one of me walking it, right? Well, let's go back to that one, back one up again. One more. Now, where's that sidewalk? Must be the first one. Oh, yeah, that's where the sidewalk ends, at Anderson Road, when they could go, I think I was out of the city, too. And I want to know why they don't have sidewalks there. Everybody on that stretch, there's four, four of us, and then the one on Anderson, that's the side of his house, he has sidewalks in the front. We all have the sidewalk, so we don't have to walk in the road. We've got a list of people that have signed up. I think I got about, that's one group, then there's another one.
We only have one of them, but they're in the file.
Okay. Forty or 50 people that have signed up for that.
There's a, there's a record on file of all the neighbors in the area that are supportive, so there is, they're, they're in that same file.
Thank you.
All right. As I said, I think that, I don't know why, who, did you get a lot of input for people that want that sidewalk on Eastern? And if you did, did you tell them that they, it won't help them get to the park if they're walking? If you're riding your bike, you're not going to use that sidewalk anyway. Ride your bike across, then you go with traffic. But if you're walking, you can't, you can't legally walk down there, right? So are we encouraging that, by putting that sidewalk for people to break the law? I guess that's a question I have. When the sidewalk from Peninsula Court to Anderson would help, we could walk down there. The people coming from the school, believe me, I taught high school for over 30 years. Kids do make some crazy decisions. Remains aren't developed. They're not going to go down to Anderson, they're going to walk right, you walk out of the high school, Peninsula Court's right there. The weather's breaking, I see people, kids walking down there now. It's not that much traffic, so there's not too much of a problem, but kids are not, they're going to take the shortest route. Then everybody who lives on Peninsula Court, obviously, there's 18 houses, there's some people. I don't know if you can put sidewalks in at Eastern, I think you should be able to put sidewalks in for us, too. What is the one about me walking? Is that one on there, or can't show it?
I don't.
Yeah? Oh, we don't have my 500 one? Yeah, I made one of me walking.
I don't think so.
Along there. When you get by that mail, it gets dangerous. Most of the time, you're going to walk on the people's property anyway, so why don't we put some sidewalks in? I was. I was really encouraged to hear from Richard that collaboration they got because it seems like I'm all on my own up here every time. Even my neighbors had said some did come, but they didn't, I don't know what happened with that. But they did sign it, that they, they want it. I think we get somewhat left out in that area. It's like, we're in the city, we pay city taxes and we don't have any sidewalks. So I'm probably to try to work towards that. We really need that to make us safe for everybody, the kids and us and everybody there. I thank you for your time and I thank you for the, all the effort. I know we got a lot of things going on, a lot of great things, and I definitely appreciate that too. But I just want to say, in the 23 years I've lived there, nothing's been done there. And it's always been because of the highway. Well, but that doesn't keep us from getting sidewalks, I wouldn't think. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for preparing that. We've appreciated your public comment in the past and appreciate you putting together a presentation with the full picture there for us. All right, with that, I'll open up general public comment. Okay, yeah, I'll open up general public comment about anything.
I know that that stretch of highway has been a problem and issue. You know, sidewalks could be put over there, but you still would have to get permission from MDOT because that would be within their right of way. So, you know, petitions could be signed and everything else, but at the end of the day, MDOT makes that final recommendation. And so. Yes.
No, it's not a two-way conversation.
Welcome everyone after.
But, but yeah, so, but anyways, with it, with it not being a decommissioned state highway, it's, it's something that is, you know, that, you know, is something that is MDOT's right of way. Now, if the city and Peninsula Township would agree, and this was probably a few years ago, that throws talks with MDOT to decommission portion of M37 from the city up through Peninsula Township. And Peninsula Township threw a fit because it would be under the county road commission's purview to maintain that portion of road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment at this time?
Am I allowed to make your comments too?
Hold on, hold on just a second, we're going to let Richard sneak in and then. Yes, I believe you can do a general public comment too because your reserved public comment was separate. So yes, I just wanted to check.
Just a quick, Richard Robbins, Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. I wanted to share with you that I've had an opportunity to meet with Harry and we've actually, are going to start the collaboration process with MDOT, city and, and others to try to figure out some, some approaches here. So I think what was presented is a very valid safety concern. And I think what we're going to work with Harry, the neighbors and also MDOT, as we have relationships already with MDOT, as well as the county, we have those relationships now started. So we're going to, we're going to work to try to come back with some thoughts with, to the region for some sort of a solution here because it is not acceptable. So thank you.
Thank you. And yes, Harry, you've got three minutes of general public comment, just like any other person if you wanted to.
Hi, Jeff Kenny, 1200 Peninsula Court, technician, assistant helper. But real short, I mean, I really respect what was said about with MDOT, but they have sidewalks on Granville Park, that's 31, you know, so I don't see where that goes.
Hold on, we're not having a two-way conversation, guys, it's 10:30 at night. Let's do some public comment and we'll fill some further in.
We should make a research into this, a motion for research and to improve the area.
Yeah, thank you for that. And thank you for the presentation. Any other general public comment, Harry, go ahead.
I've been contacting MDOT and they said if you can get the people in the city to agree to the sidewalks, they'll put in a crosswalk there. I'm starting to smile because we thought, I thought this would be a no brainer. We want local control. Why wouldn't we want local control? And MDOT was willing to do it back in 2019 because of the pandemic. I've gone through this, I've sent you guys emails, it just never got, anything got done with. That's the next step. We cannot reduce that speed limit because they did a study and everybody was going almost 40 miles. 85% of people are going 38.5 miles per hour. So I just think that, that that's not a true statement, he said. Because I've talked to MDOT and I think some of you have. And if we put the sidewalks in, they'll put in the crosswalk. I just want to get a sidewalk to get safe for the town right now or to the park.
Thank you. I think there's only one member of the public left who has not spoken to any public comment. Do you have any desire? Nope, pass it on that. Okay, we're going to close public comment with that. I do know that the desire to abandon that highway did get abandoned during COVID and there's been other pushback since then. There are some right of way issues, but I appreciate everybody who's coming together to work on that. And so hopefully we'll have some good luck. Any other final comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting. Have a great night, everybody, thank you.